Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of the Soul of Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case, even till now. We are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than them. They say I insult them. I insult you because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. It is very clear and straightforward. He's there, go and check it yourself. And you're asking me to be happy instead of me to be upset that I was arrested. Did I commit any crime? Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of the Soul of Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case, even till now. We are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than them. They say I insult them. I insult you because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. It is very clear and straightforward. He's there, go and check it yourself. And you're asking me to be happy instead of me to be upset that I was arrested. Did I commit any crime? Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of the Soul of Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case, even till now. We are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than them. They say I insult them. I insult you because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions...
...of the Rising Sun below our cherries, we love and hope and all our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our faults. But in the price is that all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our privilege. The women's son that lived and fought until free shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible landscape we'll pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide him as. Then shall our children hear the glorious song of victory with God almighty. Oh God, protect us from the impound. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human is called. To give a nod to count the consign. Let those who rule to suffer with resoluteness to make this land a land of righteousness.
All hail be of law. Land of the rising sun we love and cherish. We have vanquished all enemies. All hail be of law. God bless Beowulf. In him we trust. Shout it, sing it. All hail Beowulf. God bless Beowulf. We have emerged triumphant from all our faults. Through the crucible landscape we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it. All hail Beowulf. All hail Beowulf. We shall always remember all that perished in the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayer shall be borne both day and night. Save them always. All hail Beowulf. All hail Beowulf. Now stars shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom shielding us from glory unleashed by all our light and bent. Beowulf, Beowulf shining bright.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwuke Kaba Yama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwu Okike Abiyama who decided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old. Our Father who art in heaven, Nanyinkebine Liguwa, Kahagedinso, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation, because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee. All over this very planet that you created, they are listening. Across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet, we are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onyeprimi Heni that this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood. They have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 3rd year of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have sinned? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Become a Nanyebolatineke Naniwe. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you, to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwaba Yama Beniwe Go Whiter Than White and whiter than snow. Oh Wozanyi Simehe Uchinake, is there any way that we have sinned that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago, that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth will cease to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukwoke Kaba Yama, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua, who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans. Chukwoke Kaba Yama Hagefe Rofefe, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be wrought in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children. The Ephics and the Bibles, the Is on, the Shakiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are travelling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukwoke Kaba Yama Nigefe Rofefe Nozo Puleche, we will dance on these streets. I'm telling you, by the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so, because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra, that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for, in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadensosinebebe, Isebebe. Isebebe. My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. I lead indigenous people of Biafra Iboi. So also do I.
Okay. The next on our agenda is the opening prayer, opening prayer. Opening prayer, yes, we've done it. The welcome address by Honorable Utta. Honorable Utta, please, you have the mic.
Thank you very much. Can you confirm you can hear from me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Your address. The acting Prime Minister of the Biafa Republic Government in Eze, Honorable Ogutukun Kureg, our wonderful and spectacular Minister of Information, Honorable Sona Abrawa, fellow citizens of Biafra, journalists, listeners and esteemed guests. We gather here today again to reaffirm our commitments to the cause of Biafra, restoration and recognition. Recent events have shown us that our struggle is not just about independence, but about the survival of our people. The gelling of our leaders and the designation of Nigeria as a country of particular concern are stark reminders of the challenges we face. The repression of peoples, Biafra in Nigeria, is a painful reality that we cannot ignore. However, we see a glimmer of hope. However, we see a glimmer of hope. The interest shown by um, Donald J. Trump. The United States American President and the US Congress. On the persecution of Christians in Nigeria had brought out a struggle to the global stage. This is a testament to the power of our collective efforts. And the loving prowess of our dear Elias and his team, Moran Global. Permit me to use this opportunity to express gratitude to the acting Prime Minister, Honorable Ogutukun Kure. For his resilience despite the distractions from people that only speak about Biafra because of the financial benefits to them. The more they try to bring him down, the more he showed them results. They accused him of doing photoshopping. And he took Biafrans to the Congress House. They said his carrying bag like Jehovah's Witnesses. Without knowing that the bag is full of wisdom and knowledge. He became the first Biafran and freedom fighter to ever testify against a zoo in the Congress. What a historic feat that will ever remain in the annals. We must remember that our struggle is not just about court cases or political maneuvers. It is about the resilience of our people, the bravery of our men and the sacrifices of our women and children. It is said that the position of freedom fighters is either in the grave, in the prison or exile. But I stand tall to tell you that in addition to that. Being invisible before your enemies and being the midst of their enemies without them seeing you. Is also uh, can be categorized as a position of a freedom fighter. So all of us here fighting from the homeland are also great freedom fighters. So when you are sitting at home in obedience to the government of Brigi. Seeing fighters just hovering around the environment and seeing the truckloads of military hardware in your community. It is a reminder that you are also a great freedom fighter. You are fighting like the same way with those in exile. Doing your part to ensure that Biafra is restored. A promised kingdom that must be restored. As we move forward, let us remain united and focus on our goal. We will continue to raise our voices. We will continue to advocate for the rights of our people. And we will continue to seek for justice in the face of oppression. Let us remember that our actions have consequences. And will not be deterred in bringing to book those that are sabotaging our efforts. When you hear the saying in our local parlance that. Don't be mistaken. It does not mean Ibo's do not have a king. It entails that in that sense of a leader, someone would take up a leadership position and give direct directions when it mattered most. In that sense of Mazinamdekanu, Simon Eba took the lead, ensuring the legacies of Mazinamdekanu lives on. On to the fake people that Mazinamdekanu surrounding itself with. Ignorantly led a campaign against Simon, thinking that doing Mazinamdekanu good. Today, the chicken has come home to roach. They led a shameful act and must be regretting why they did so. We are now the last lap of the race. And the APM is handling the battle, battling very well. He had delivered the master trove that landed the zoo to coma. The upper court was unprecedented. What a sucker punch he has given to them. I want to use this opportunity to put the word on notice, especially the leader of the free world. That the terrorists are on the rampage now kidnapping the hundreds. This time around not for ransom purposes alone. But to get enough man's shield, should the US decide to embark on airstrike against them. We therefore call on the leader of the free world, Donald Trump. To consider having boots on the ground of Biafra. Biafra, the fact though, is government is ready to provide a base and work with the US soldiers. To nip this terrorism in the boat so that peace can return again. And for women and children to carry out, carry on with their lives without fear of, of being murdered, being kidnapped or raped by these murderous marudas. My fellow citizens, it is Biafra o'clock. We are getting closer to our final destination. Everything happening today is part of a divine arrangements and nothing can stop Biafra. I say, nothing can stop Biafra. We have never been this close. They may try to break your spirit by creating fear, uncertainty and doubts. Manipulate your emotions to make you feel discouraged enough to give up. You cannot be broken unless you surrender. I call on you to stand courageous and focused. Stand firm, be unmovable. As our sacrifices will not be in vain, we will surely march victorious. God bless our leaders, Mazinamdekanu. God bless the Prime Minister, Maz, Simon Eba. God bless the acting Prime Minister, Maz, Ogutukun Kure. God bless Brigi. God bless Biafra in general. Ebon. 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 Thank you.
Ebon, thank you.
Well done, well done, well done, well done Isaac.
Thank you, thank you Maz, you're welcome.
Mazazik, thank you so much. The next thing on our agenda is a brief historical background of our central region. By my humble self. Onyese. A brief historical background of the central region of Biafa Republic. On this day. The first ever town hall meeting with our acting Prime Minister, Honorable Ogutukun Kure. This day, the twenty-third November twenty twenty-five. Just as every great builder has a great plan for his great buildings. Our leader Mazinamdekanu during his broadcasting and preaching led. A very great formidable foundation. Upon which we are building to be. Nigerian government had thought igniting and convicting him would stop the movement, not knowing that. His war has become a solid foundation that was laid on a solid rock. And I want to remind you that. Breathing is that rock which can never be moved. In one of his finest moments, or should I say one of his uh, his finest. Broadcast. He preached and he said. We are going to form a government. And the way and manner going to be will not be reviewed in the temple. If not. The sabotage. If not, the sabotage will go and block it. And today, the government has been formed. We are very grateful to our. To our. Obatobi. The Prime Minister of the, of the Biafa people. In another development, he also spoke about this Biafra Confederation. Where he outlined emphatically the five blocks. Of the Confederation, namely. The northern region, the southern region, the central region, the eastern region. And the, the western region. Just like every other region, this central region. Comprises of eight states. Namely, Odomegu State. Ikemba State. Owere State. Okibwe State. Alanso State. Yikumisia State. And the Rube State, which is the capital territory. Of the Republic of Biafra. Today, those spoken word of Mazinamdekanu has become a reality. As I welcome you all to this first ever Central Regional Meeting of the Republic of Biafra. This has equally accomplished the word of Obatobi, our Prime Minister Maz, Simon Eba. Who said, we are going to make the kidnapping of our leader Mazinamdekanu. To become useless in the hand of the zoo government because they thought igniting him would stop the movement. Today, we have our forty states with capitals. Well structured with responsible and skilled administrators and cabinet members. Who are doing diligently well in their various states. Biafra is here. I thank you, our acting Prime Minister, for your. For your diplomatic and political engagements in Washington DC and beyond. Mazinamdekanu said, go and get me Biafra. I am dead already. It's only Biafra that will, it's only Biafra that will resurrect me or bring me to life. If you have not been supporting Brigi. And you say you love Mazinamdekanu. Start now to support Brigi. Support. Or. And then stay. This. Bring Mazinamdekanu life. This is the only thing that will free him. That will give him the joy and the fulfillment. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you Onyese, well done, thank you.
Thank you Onyese.
The next thing on our agenda is uh. By Mamac. By Nnamak, sorry.
Deu Onyese.
Mamac, are you ready sir?
Yeah, did not, yeah, I'm here. I see Oji anega no beke. I am a suje, a beke. Ni Oji, ibo ife nji biya. Nihelegono demji noga, ebwa wugifemi ya biya baye camera. Nihebe mni mea. I'm ototo Oji. I'm wa karilu. I'm wa fufa, ma kandemo adane. Ya maya inkoku abasi dielu. Abia bonanya Oji. Chukoki kebioma. Okikeke woken, kenwame. Ike edu, gi kala. Abasi dielu, biya bonanya Oji. Edu biya bonoji. Ale, biya bonanya Oji. Ndi chi no no biya bonanya Oji. Ati chi oha fea, udu mezze, biya bonanya Oji. Nati oke, ande chokon, biya bonanya Oji. Ogi bupa, bereba. Gekua wa, gekua wa. Ajiu ku. Unu biya bonoji. Utu tu eze ma. Biya bonanya Oji. Abasi utu tu. Ofu utu tu. Au nundeji hechua wa biya. Unu mo wehechua, uno biya bonoji ta. Ebri okumoku. Ebri biya bonanya Oji. Nyelu of isui isochi. Uno biya bonoji ta. Ogo angongo fumpuru. Uno biya bonanya Oji. Amadi oha biya bonoji. Oge wuchinketiti. Uno biya bonoji ta. Ifi jokendoka, uno biya buroji ta. Oge wuchinkadinli. Chin kazwi bohli. Udu mamin. Oge wuchinkena mimi, biya bonoji ta. Ekandori a saga. Uno biya bonoji ta. Igusama kikbe jenji. Igusama keku wa koto. Igusama kezuku. Biya bonanya Oji. Gubuku ma ya burubé. Ogi bupuma yibeko. Uno biya bonoji ta. Eke biya bonoji. Ode biya bonoji. Afu biya bonanya Oji. Npo uno biya bonoji ta. I see Onye gue soji, gue sandu. Ibinamokpa be ya siya niya li fe wanta, gulendo kuaro go. I na aliya uno biya gulendo kuano go. Ofu. Anji ofa, anji ogo. Ebbe bere, ugo bere. In case bebe tokoha, nkuja ya. Nkuja ha ya, hopa jia ya. Hopa jia ya, ife tue ono. Mofutoku ifama, owaya, owayo owasaa. Biafra ye bi. Odigenda enza chopo ade woja, nochi ade wo. Odigenda chopo a ne, aliya ya, nochi a leani. Anya atugu yero ba. Anya atuga osa. Anya atugunupé. Anya atugue gala. Odigenda encho po a lewo. Anya atugu di TV. I'm no koha, aliya ni. One na biya roa, in pogo pogo. Ofu, jinde wo. Allo obambi so, jinde wo. Otamini, owere, jinde wo. Ogeta anku, ebbe kuku, jinde wo. Nwo oriyo were, jinde wo. Mininja ba, jinde wo. Anji oni shea ni. Our APM, the finisher. Onye ekonye mezhu. Anji ya ne ya pagaaka. Anji nduya, ne ya pagaaka. Anji nduezunu ya, ne ya pagaaka. Anji ndomore mea, ne ya pagaaka. Anji nduoro ya, ne ya pagaaka. Mo ono gozo, buchaya ya. Ono ga moto, buchaya ya. Ono guwre, buchaya ya. Buchaya nyu furoi ojo. Buchaya ya madho jo. Buchaya ya mungo jo. I ne gure, oni shea ochi aha ani. We gue butuzo. The top three P Generala. Ne gure Generala Ross. Unu ndes, ndes school of, ndes school. Ndes school of score. Bagani ke. Menanjema, nyala bulu, anyana. I'm gure wo, ne ya bu noaka. I'm nasihunu buchaya ya wo. Ne gurumu Biafra dumnon, buruburu ebbe dumowagu, ne ya bu noaka. Nda ke mogaga, ebia, ife abashia, imu no wa ntsuka. Madioha. Abasi dielu, chukoki ke. Gue la goya, ye pa woobi. Gue dono no, kuwa ye pa woobi. Aba fu ya, legi fa u, meme ya, ewu, egi gebe lele gi, di ke. Di ke gi gebe, di ka la ge mon. Mo yonwa koobi. Aba biya fado, osa wine baga. Aba biya fado, ife wine tsuka. Me pre ma du dum, akwaya. Opo goa posani, ifa di kono bua wo po. Niya no po go beke. Me pre anu ozo. Isay. Isay.
Isay.
Say.
Say.
Isay. Isay.
Deu.
One queen.
Isay.
Kalaga, emura di jide. Ona, muwre wo Oji. Ayaya, bu noha kojiya. Anma ko, Onyese, Onyoka kota ne bo. Abia bu noha Njogi, Onyese, bi ko bu noha Njogi. Oge wo na ko a ne biya, deu. Okay. Thank you, my congregation minister for the correction. Thank you. Like deu. Deu. Onyese. Ebeposa gibo no oje ambrojo oje atume ware. Five thousand AJ. Bono oje, lega akawa no oje, deu.
Okay, as you, as you are making progress, please, uh, Angoleka. Uh, the deputy of, uh, uh. Odumegu, please, be the team of those that would record, uh. Uh, the people that donating, please, record it. Make sure that you record it and find out how they will pay it. If they will pay it in through, uh, website. Uh, or they will pay it through the homeland. And take note that, um. There's some peoples that, uh, when they pay it, they will not send evidence of their payment. At the end of everything, the P S would not, um. Be able to, uh, send the money to, uh, the national accounts. Please, take note of this. Anyone that making any donations or paying. You should provide the evidence of payment to your admins. Thank you.
Do we boot up this a paraboy or receive power force?
Kwa goliya kenu, akali foko goliya kenu. Ebeke mu yidike, beke mu yidikara, eleku otuwa ya fortune. Okay, I did.
Okay, greetings. Once again, I lost my, my co-hostship. I am using five thousand AJ to let's. This beautiful color not. Ndeu wonu.
Deu, yes. My lord.
Yeah, he handed the color to the, to the, uh, to the head of the family to, to present before, I think.
No, I use five, five.
No, my lord, the, the person that bred the color note when the owner of the house wasn't around. He used five thousand AJ to pick the color note.
Akama.
Akama makai ga korun ma ma kyo. Akama ra ma. Akama ra makai ga koru onyesa yo. Akama ra ma. Mazze soni good evening no.
Yeah, it's me, thank you.
Alright.
It's me. Thank, thank you so much. My camera is not coming, my camera is not coming on. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we still, we still need more people to, to come and collect the color. At least, uh, all the states, all the eight states here. You need to represent yourself. Odumegu State, please come up, come on board and, uh, answer your name. Odumegu States, we are waiting for you. Okay. Okay, I think, I think let's, let's handle this one, their hands are open.
Okay, um, I want to collect my own, uh, object. So I will use the ten thousand AJ to collect my own object. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable.
Thank you so much. Madame Monkey. Korono niaka now.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yes, so. Altamidi anyimao. Ona bote ra ma. Andichime reze.
This meeting is being recorded.
Monkey, over to you.
Okay. Is this ten thousand AJ or five thousand AJ? Ten thousand.
Ten thousand AJ.
Okay. Alright, so I welcome everybody to this, um, to this, uh, great, um. Uh, yeah, fundraising, yeah, this is one, yeah, it's not, it doesn't happen before, so this is. The first time all of us are, you know, all the central states. Okay, so APM, if you're here, my greetings. Mazze Sonia Barawa, my greetings, yeah, Minister Love, my mom.
There were. My baby.
Yeah. Alright, Minister Betty, now beko, then I greet every other person, yeah, alright, so. There you were. Okay, so I'm all state now, so, yeah, please, start recording for all of, so I'll start with the two hundred, alright? Yeah, Minister, who is recording for this night?
Is it two hundred AJ or two hundred AJ ma?
Two, sorry, two hundred thousand AJ, yes, two hundred thousand AJ for all state.
Arakoko akeba. Arakoko akeba.
There were.
There were done there. God bless you.
There were.
Omuya, I want to be safe.
Thank you.
Alright, to. Nankiri da anyima. Esbo wa nyedi anyima. Eki merete. AJ, ma yama.
There were.
Yeah, we love you. There were. We love you, Madame Monkey, we love you. The next person on the line is Iwoma, Iwoma, uh, Etanang State Admin.
Etan Anna.
Iwoma. Etanang State Admin.
I think he's mooted, they cannot moot him.
Sometimes if you call, you no understand, you twist your mouth too small a bit, the color.
Maybe, maybe he's having a problem or meeting himself.
Okay, can we go to? Ayachuku, Assewu. Ayachuku, can you unmute yourself? Honorable Sony, check if you can unmute them from there. It's like they find it difficult.
Uh, okay, uh, who, who should be unmuted?
Etanana, Etanana, they muted me. I was mooted. Okay, Etanana is talking now.
Okay.
Etanana is on. Uh, so I, I was muted from there.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Good evening.
Good evening.
All protocol of ZAF. From. I will pick the color with the sum of, uh. Five thousand AJ.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Etanana.
Wow, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Etanana.
Thank you, my very good friend.
The choir, I hope you not got set me today for your, for your miss, so yes, uh.
We will, we will.
I, I, I'm very, very much awake.
Are you going to be singing bass or just singing?
I will, I will now sing like, uh, I see, oh, yes, yesterday, I, I heard him sing it the other day, I prayed to, I said, God, I beg you. Change this man a voice, if, and the only thing.
Oh my god, one no, no bad proper.
I, I, you, you not hear that, I mean.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry, come over the.
I, I, I hope he's not here.
Don't worry, I'm going to tell on you. Okay.
Ah, that look on, uh.
Uh, Ayachuku, it's your turn.
Two, one. Yes, Nico. You should know that, uh, yeah. I just want to quickly do my own before we start work, yeah, it's, uh, we're about to start, so. I won't have all the time as soon as I start working. So I just wanna quickly do my own. First of us, I still want to appreciate everyone who keep this, uh. This Biafra going, it's not easy. Every day we come, that is what is called mental toughness. We must continue. We are the only people the zoo is afraid of. It's not those our brothers, those cowards that all day cozy pinot and down. We must maintain the. The fire burning. Appreciate everyone, our APM, I appreciate you, Sonia Barawa. Our senior citizens, including me, because I'm a senior citizen. I appreciate.
Welcome on board.
Thank you, thank you, our bishop, thank you. So, yeah, without wasting time, on behalf of, of Odumegu State, on my, on my dear state, Odumegu State. It's just that I don't know how Odumegu State is in central, it's supposed to be in the east, because we are from the man from the east, you know? But anyhow, we appreciate it, it doesn't matter, all we want is Biafra. On behalf of Odumegu State, I'm, I'm, I'm collecting the color note with the hundred thousand AJ. Thank you, everyone, all the money we paid this week, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, I would, thank you so much, you've been doing good one. You've been doing well. And the next, and Nico, let's sing for him. The choir, over to you.
Ayole da anyima. Thank you, and your lead.
Thank, thank you so much, Ayachuku.
Yeah, I am welcome, man.
The next, the next on our line is Angoleka.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Good evening, our APM. Evening. For informationista. Good evening, brethrens. In fact, God do it already for us. Man. So, this evening, you know, this is the first time of central region where God will still do it for us. It is not easy. But I pray that chukuku kika diama. We open doors for all of us so that we will not lack. In supporting of what we are doing, no matter what women are trying to do. But all my hope is that. God is still with us. Without God, we are moving nowhere. And the will of God is already working on our side. Despite the obstacles, despite intimidation. Despite the experiences that we are seeing. He never deter us from marching forward. So I have a little thing that I'm trying. In. In not play, I be about the letter and. I said the. By the rivers of the zoo. And here we are. And there we wait. When we remember Biafra. By the rivers of the zoo.
So.
The well captivity.
I'm gonna song.
Sing a love song.
Hi, your network, uh.
Network no green, network.
Try and shift your position to see, to get better, oh, it has knocked up.
So, the network has knocked our Angoleka out, so with this beautiful victory song. Okay. Let's, let's have a journey. And while we wait for Angoleka to come back. Okay, Angoleka is back.
I'm back, you don't mind this, uh, network, thank God. So, what I'm trying to say. We are, we have moved the mountain. We have reached our goal. It's just a little time which we are saving it. So, on behalf of Odumegu. We are. And.
Oh my god.
Um. Mazze. Chukuka diya. Fifty thousand.
Hey, only maziki chukuka diya that we had.
Let me assist Madame Reika.
Okay, did you get the total?
Yeah, let me, let me assist Madame Reika, I'm the admin of Odumegu State.
Okay.
Why?
They're still talking.
My chukuka makea fifty thousand AJ. Wow, am I not coming out?
Yeah, your network was bad.
It was breaking, it was breaking before now. Okay, if you can.
I should start expression.
Yeah, you can, yeah, we didn't hear you well.
Okay, I said, uh, Odumegu State are picking color. I welcoming our APM with red a thousand. Of passing Mazze chukuka diya fifty thousand AJ. Mazze. Cipren, ten thousand AJ. Sipren, ten thousand AJ. Mazin, Oniade Manazoo, which is dove, three thousand AJ. Mother Angoleka, ten thousand AJ. Mazi Chukukameka, fifty thousand AJ. Mazi Kelvin, sixty thousand AJ. Mazi Kchuku, ten thousand AJ. Altogether is two hundred and thirteen thousand AJ from Odomegu State. They won.
Hello, darling them.
Thank you. Hello, sir.
Under the meru.
American, the choir and your beg, wake up.
Give us time.
I got, I got, I got, sorry, I'm no choir, master, master, choir mistress, I got sorry.
You have a question, give us time.
Uh, hi, I'll go, okay, whichever can go, if you go, okay.
Ah, thank you, thank you, I beg you, this is why you call my name now, indirectly reporting me to the police, I, I beg you, I, I, my, my apology.
Udo de, udo de.
Jenny, yellow, yellow card, yellow card.
There is no card though.
Jenny, over to you.
Ah, any other interruption, we get a ticket.
Yes.
No, man, they will. Love them, dad.
Aspirant, you ready, please? Come on board.
There will be shop comfort, good evening, man.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, the Central Region, uh, speaking to you here eh, is eh, Ebon State Admin. I want to thank everyone, I want to appreciate our APM. For his good work that he's doing. Want also to thank our Minister of Information for. Kindness and love toward what we are doing. Yes, um, we are making progress. And we are looking forward to see the activities of all the state admins. Supervised by the regional heads. And um, to make sure that eh, the message is grassroots. And eh, of our priority is to make sure that the message is with the grassroots. For uh, everything, everything that is here. And eh, if you're in your state platform, I know it's up to one eh, two hundred peoples, three hundred peoples, you need to ask your admins why there's no, their citizen in that platform. So we want all the state admins on all the citizens of each state to make sure that um, if, if anyone did not have telegram, create telegram to them. Wants every state platform to make sure that the state platform is functioning. And every state that is not um, upgrading their platform by adding their citizens, that state admin be questioned. So, uh, we are making a progress, I must tell you the reality. And um, we are looking forward to have eh, Souths. South will have their own town hall meeting, it may be before, after this eh, there will be the form. And um, encourage everyone to be doing the needful and support a little you can, to make sure this eh, we end this eh, journey. We are tired of every day we gather here like this and say that we are doing town hall meeting. Want to, we don't want to see ourselves as agitation, as career agitation. Want to see ourselves as people that fight and overcome the demons and be a nation. I believe on the process that we have got to come, very soon, we are going to celebrate together. So, on behalf of my executive, my bits, we are picking the cola notes in the sum of ten thousand AJ. And eh, for those that we have appointed to records all these donations, make sure that you record everything's and eh, give account of it, how and how they donated, so all the committee should take note of this. Thank you, and God bless all of us.
Hello.
Thank you.
Spirits, thank you so much.
We can do very well.
We know your doing, we know your doing, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
The choir.
Experience see dani ma o. Experience see mara ma o. There were.
There were. Thank you very much, yes.
There were spirits.
Jenny, are you ready, Jenny? Jenny, can you, can you unmute and talk to Biafrans? Okay, while we are still waiting for you, maybe former.
Jenny, you can unmute now.
Are you, are you hearing me now, please?
Yeah, yes.
Good evening, Biafrans. Good evening. On behalf of Ekong State, I'm picking the garden egg with ninety seven thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I will send the receipt to Sonia Abarawa.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you, Ekong.
God bless you, pause.
I am, thank you.
Jenny, baby.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I called it, thank you so much, Jenny.
Maybe, maybe former, talk to Biafrans.
Maybe if I'm uh, unmute yourself.
Can I unmute, I will can I mute, okay?
Yeah, uh, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
I want to thank my eh, APM. APM, I really, really appreciate eh, your effort to see that eh, Biafran rejoice eh, very soon. I want to thank um, uh, the Prime Minister of Information, Mazzi Abarawa. Uh, greeting to eh, my brother, the COS. Eh, thank you so much, my lovely brother. I want to thank eh, one of my sister there, uh, you see you work eh, Sister Nkeroka. I thank you so much, I'm seeing all you, thank you much eh, oh. On behalf of my estate, I thank you, I will be blessed.
Which state is your state?
Alanso State.
Alanso, okay, mention the name is a great name.
That's maybe former admin, Alanso State. Do you get me?
Did you mention amount?
We didn't mention, we didn't hear the amount.
Okay, okay, it might be eh, network, ten thousand AJ.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, my dear former.
Ten thousand, ten thousand, thank you.
So much.
Alanso, and we appreciate.
Thank you, there Alanso.
Maybe former, thank you so much, you're doing greatly well in your states, Nonya, let's have you.
Okay, I'm Nanya, I'm mute.
Thank you, sir. Hello to number.
Hi.
That's good, that's good.
I enjoy it.
That's good, that's good to know. Um, uh, please, all protocols observed, I'm on the road, uh, I just wanted uh, uh, to support what we are doing today with one hundred AJ on behalf of uh, Kiw State, they won.
Wow.
Yes, smell, yes. So I will send the receipt to, who do I send the receipt to?
The Information Minister.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you, I love you, thank you.
Everybody, ladies and gentlemen, Ndin, Ndinna, Biconi, Tishenike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Nonya Yemanam. France want to hear from you, thank you.
Let's continue, Mazie Nekaka, here the name.
Uh, um, call the number, you can unmute yourself.
Oh, okay, I can, I can.
No, Mazin.
Greetings, eh, my senior comrades, my ladies, ministers and um, our honorable minister for information and our APM, I greet you all, you so much for a good job. Uh, before I go on, I want to move a motion with the twenty, ten thousand AJ, I want to move a motion before I go on. I want to say that henceforth, nobody should address our IG as Olopa, Olopa is not a Biafran language.
Oh.
If you don't know what to call her, Olopa, I don't want to hear Olopa with the ten thousand AJ. And I am saying that she will be called IG, or if you know ID on that name, that is a Biafran name, whether is it from eh, eh, Ibibo or as you call it, but Olopa is not a Biafran name, henceforth, I am moving a motion that it should be seized from now.
Uh, we can be called it what, bro.
We agree.
Whatever you like, call him, but let it be a Biafran name, a Biafran language.
It's a Biafran, it's the same eh, the same eh, the same eh.
Yes, let it be, let it be a Biafran language, Olopa is a Yoruba language, it's not a Biafran language, so.
I saw, I want to, on behalf of Odomegu State, I want to take the cola with thirty thousand AJ.
Too much, a cola too much.
There were.
Who called the number? Who the number, who called the number? You just got a ticket.
IG.
You just got a ticket.
Ten thousand AJ. Ten thousand AJ.
Ah, you, you do call ticketing.
No, that's the voice, that's the voice, that's the voice. Eh, back in the mocanga, eh, back in the mocanga, give a Biafran, who's in mocanga, eh, back in the mocanga.
That's the voice.
That's the voice, ten thousand, ten thousand.
That's the voice. That's the voice.
Um, just for record purposes, so far, how much is it?
Fifty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
They won, they won.
Now, remember when you are done to put down your hand or you pick a ticket.
No, I, 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 I'm aware now, I can be, I'm, I'm.
No problem.
Thank you so much, number. Nwoba, Mwoba, over to you, please.
Amuta.
It's Amu.
Yeah, am I coming out?
I'm all bad.
Okay, yeah, good evening, my APM. Uh, good evening, my ministers in the house, I greet everyone.
Now.
Yeah, the people are welcome to Central Region of Afeland. Uh, without wasting time, I'm picking the cola with the ten thousand AJ. They will.
Your free smart TV. Choose yours and get it delivered for free, no fees and no shipping cost. Receive your free smart TV today, tap the screen now, choose yours and get it delivered.
Mwoba, move your stuff, please.
Well, eh, eh, he can deliver the money anyway.
And put down your hand. Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, let's go to Ezhi Ada Abigail, one of your mama ma here, I'm over to you, please.
Go ahead, Abigail.
Ezhi, Ezhi Abigail.
Yes, I'm here, right now.
Okay.
Am I in here?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Loud.
Biafran screen.
Yes.
Yeah, she Ndin Yum Queen.
Yo.
Nikompeno.
Yeah, but.
I'm one boat, none to move it. Eh, mm hmm, it is.
I'm, I'm one eh, da, 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 goodness, in the.
Biconu, Biconu, eh, eh, yo, who, 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 no, ta, aga, pa, me, su, oki. Eh, na, mi, ndidi, eh, eh, no, eh, eh, so, so, eh, eh, bo, da, no, no, eh, eh, mi, ndidi, ki, ah, Biconu.
Yeah, my.
Hmm, oniye naposa, koko, information minister.
Oniye ma sozi. Oh my god, Abigail, look at that.
New York mean a rep, eh, huh, nah, eh, eh, baga, geta, oniye, keep, eh, no, oniye, keep, eh, eh, do, Jelia, geta. In the Central eh, homeland, eh, kelela.
Ekelela mano, eh, na ka. No, no, ba, eh, eh, ba, ba li, ni nete, hmm? Hmm. Onyo hola. Ekelela manu, ya, gajela no. Ma, the executive, ni ne na admin. Ma, oh, ma, eh, le ma di, eh. Eh, 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 longa. Eh, eh. Na, na, na. Ashina, ni ni brele na mba wu kodi, ni ni, bigasiya.
Ugo, ugo.
Kere. Ego na yipara nambe mbo. Obego kere kere. Ego kere kere, ego mara mara. Ta ra ya. Ego kere kere, ego mara. Ena aponeke. Ya pranee. Uwele na go. But. Eh, suka dan. Itlo ayakaya mapwe. Amama. Ando. Hello.
There you are, thank you everyone.
Thank you so much. Ezudo Anthony. Can we have you? Anthony Ezudo. Okay. Nnamaki already. I'm muted.
Okay, uh, um, okay, okay, uh. Okay. As you, as you, as you is submitted already, if you can.
Okay. Okay, Ezudo come.
Odo drew no monem, good evening my. Yeah, um, first of all, I want to appreciate our APM. The man with few words and many actions. Um, I'm grateful to God for having you. Secondly, our information minister. Uh, Mr. Barawa. And on yes, who is the, um, initiator of this program? Avamo Antonio Corey, the admin of Okigwe State. Um. For a long time, I, I've actually been quiet for so many reasons. Because of pressure in my region and, um. But, um. Following what happened on twentieth, I think, um, the days of silence should end. And, um, we need to be proactive. Uh, okay, without so many words, I want to pick the color knot with twenty thousand AJ. I, I know that, um. We are up in this and we are not backing out until we see the end of this struggle. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They will.
Thank you so much, Anthony.
Ezudo thank you for, for bringing Okigwe up again. Thank you so much, you've done well.
Yes.
Okigwe no dianima. Anthony ni dianima.
You Anthony, thank you, Okigwe.
Thank you.
I am on. Thank Chawa.
Okay. Uh, next, next on our line is, uh.
Anthony, put down your hand, please.
Nnamaki, Nnamaki, when you see, let's have you.
There one, uh, Haneza, Ibo webo. Nimje mona ekelapola monozo. We call onea, and they are Ludo. Before I go, I. One of our sister in Canada. In a fifty thousand AJ. So, all the wonderful people that we have in Anu Dho. We have, uh, put a sit down together and work it out together. In Angibia, na this, uh. Ri- uh, regional. Regional, uh. Town hall meeting with the APM. Aludohi six hundred thousand AJ. But then, uh. Then at this program, they won.
They were.
They were. Aludoh, uneme sihi kete mwa. Take a name.
They were.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Nnamaki dianima.
Thank you.
Next. Next on the line is Nero. Nero, you can have the mic, please.
All right, all right, um, good evening from my end. Um, all protocols observed. From Icamba State, from Icamba State. Um, I want to put, um, to take. Um. To present Icamba State, from Icamba State, actually, um, with thirty thousand AJ. Thank you.
Nero, thank you so much. Icamba, thank you.
Okay Nero. Nero, Icamba. From Icamba. Alright, love, Minister Love, you got it?
Uh, for Nero, right?
Yes.
Thirty thousand.
Okay, Icamba, alright.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need more hands up, more hands up, please. There's us. There's us, thank you. Thank you for coming out this time, now we need you most.
Hello.
Hello.
Yeah, can you hear me? There were, yes, honorable love. Yes, I greet the house. I greet the house, I want to, uh. Thank our honorable APM. For the wonderful job that he's doing, you know, quietly, you know, moving mountains. I also want to thank our information minister, Marzi Barawa. You know, for the work that he has been doing. And I greet all the cabinet members, all the elders, and they will greet everyone. Um, there's no point talking too much, when we went to Washington. Marzi Rudin, I call him Marzi because I believe he's one of us, he advised us to say, and said. Talk less and do more. Talk less and do more, so. The only language that the zoo understands is force. So. And, um, that's what we are going to give to them. But before we can do that, we need to take care of the collaborators in our land. We have to take care of the collaborators in our land. You know, can't be pursuing Biafran with somewhere like Hope who's a demoted. We never will. But anyway, but before we can do that. Uh, we need a Jema, best of all. So, anyway. Um, during the northern town hall meeting. We had, uh, some kind of competition that, that went on between, uh, Eza and States. And, uh, Omanbala States, and from Eza and State, by the way. So, and the people of Omanbala were donating us. But each time we, we went down. Uh, Madame Monkey from UK. We make a donation and we come back on top. And she kept doing that, you know, so because of that. I want to support all those states. So, on behalf of all. I would like to donate, uh, hundred AJ. On our. Yes. There were. There were.
There were.
There were.
Thank you so much.
Ah, ogah demma. Ama ayokwa awa F P M. Ama adava eshe. Nuwa genya. Anke enke mbwe. Naka wa ejezibela. Ah, ah, ogah ama no ona banaya. Sileke na ne yu ku. Awa F P M na pogakaya bainaga. Ma na achon moka. Ojitsukuike. Neze wa e, ah, olumriya. Ya la cha jezibera, ya neze peya because. Ah, one se mu se. Ah, ah, one se se. So, obuhe, eh ya obuhe du ma. Ana kuyanu nu bai. So, akachi, eh ma ka nama gennan. Na achon nyoba na bu. Yisla, eh swagadiara. Ka amari haye ni. Ah, so, ana ma ayayayoyo. Ah, so, eh, du, ah, eh, tamana pimna. Ah, so, ya no eh, eh, o, omi ana kuyanu ana apya ni. Ma wehe na pa, ya ma depe ga, gaye diu me. Ma ta na ona na. Eh, bu du charata. Na na, da jitsiki. Ayge du bainaga. Makarongha eh, na, uzi. Wehe zbiha na, na, eh ha na, deha na na ayoye. Bu ndi ojo. Ndi ojo, afahana obudu mula mu. Obudu bocha, bocha. Ya kanu. Ah, so, ah, da jitsiki. Ah, ogah weh taraya, ah, da traya. Ah, ah, wa, weh again. Ah, para jezibera bukiya. Kaha, kauweje ija. Mobalo ke ka. Trumpet faunda. Ah, ka, ah, eh, kujia maju ku. Ah, eh, ha na na. So, ah, eh, ya.
Oh, wey, wey.
How we have you? There were.
There were. Yes, it is Solomon.
Yes.
I go, I go. Okay. Tamarama kaiga kuro mazi Solomon. Ah, tamarama.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Bridget New York, can we have you?
Yes, so. Um. There were no more Biafra.
There were.
Um. Omu roneye zulimozi. Ema na agumo nyosi.
Hmm.
Oh, tu nime wane mwa ye. Ala we te lo zulimozi si zi alien de central. Si ke de alien de central. Tu nu ji si ke o. Oku unu nu. Asem ware fifty a gemma. Sin de central, uno ji si ke. Hmm hmm. Um.
Yeah, gemma, okay.
Bueno ajoo.
Hmm.
Ndeha na, bo, ike, eh, iku mesia. Omu roneye umu faro. Ha, moschana. Abi, de no de sheem.
Ah, oh.
Si. Mama msi, onye choro namu, onye hunu na achogo.
Nga le.
Iku mesia. Otu na achogo. Ike le chineke noneliwe. No onye nu nu. Muana, ona mdekanu. Tu nu na bubuko. Uno warin tulé bo umu nu ni hu. Bo chunu hunu chineku, ni na na bubé. Few months ago. La lud. Ezipurumozi si, nde ludoga chon de iku mesia. Mo koronya, mo korola la iku mesia. Chineke meru nebe. Obuonya ndu nu nu leme, abo otar, obu umu. Obu umu. Because we ne deserve go, anything good. And when any of you feel, take your offense, ya bomla phone or meet any person, get up, abacha ku na, ya, omu na, omu na. So. Agamiji, hundred a gemma. Juon ndi iku mesia. Machileku many mistake boha. Atora Mohammed, omu, omu, omu ni huchineke. They are a disgrace. Uki de toro hundred a gemma. Nji. Oh, ho no.
Yes, sir. Have you seen it down? The law. Very good question.
Yes.
So, so. They have a gift like mother and son. And he's a gali, they don't want to come.
A grateful set of human beings. Abu, ah, let me, halles songgozila magariko, okay? Very soon, I hope lunugi songgoziga no la kejia. Munugela angosega, munugela angomai, munugela ta, osojinu, nu, unugela no la kejile. Very, very soon, it will happen.
Minister Lovidiangima. So, minister. So. Minister Lovidiangima. Onye chi me reze na madra po hinayao. Oh, yo.
Oh, yo.
Yo.
Oh, bi kolagore telegu.
Is you poor, oh. Ah, kamarama kaiga kurete loba new. Ah. La la tel. Thank you so much, Ethel. We love you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Eziyada.
Be welcome.
Can you? Sorry, tell us how much?
Fifty a gemma.
Okay, okay, thank you. Eziyada, biga, can you unmute yourself? You're back again.
Hmm hmm.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Still, um, our Eziyada. From the New York. Eziyada Bridget.
Okay.
She's supporting Uwari State with additional fifty a gemma.
Hmm, wow.
Yes.
Hmm, oh, for one and a half, Boguthe, okay.
Yes.
So, two hundred and fifty a gemma for Uwari State. And the, and the.
Hmm.
And hundred and ten a gemma for Uwari State. Thank you.
Okay, so fifty a gemma for. Bridgetaniangima. Boom. Bridgetani maramao. Boom. Onye chi me reze na madra po hinayao. Oh, yo. So much Bridget. Some bad. Hello. Well, it's Chi.
Thank you so much. Chi, can we have you?
Hmm hmm, there were no, my people, my people, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Dalu no, the central regions, God bless you all. You know, um. Madame Monkey, our honorable house, the factor governor, government.
Thank you.
Our great and genuine Biafra people. Our mommy comfort, Bishop Comfort, Ekenengio. Ekenengi mazio, okay, mado do.
There were no.
Um. Ana masige namjidenki. You know. Ogah was eh, idejuno now, you know? And our prayers are with you. Ah, eh, bainaga kwaronye ndua, ina agarama zina mdekanu. No munaini ne, ndino jeji. Os, otu zo, ma uzo zo. Ina eh, bere, eh, bere, no bochi nketah, wes no gadrereha na, ma na ha gapotare. Ayi weh ne kelebo. Obu na de. Ndechabu, ndi bide efa ye. Bo sojas. Soja sa ichineke kwaraka. We gozianye. Um, wo General Butuzo. Na omu neyani ne. General Gentu. Ina si, kamaru no ma, neke ori afu. Namfu. Ina kele. Minister sa idun. My minister, nde no no no, manding ken no, in exile. Na, se. Ogologondo na hisike. Ayi jina achun no ma. Munaini nding ken we, na nding ken wegi. Hmm, ina rio olis. Ko, oro potaro yu boyenta. Ko weh paraya ma. Omu, omu. Edin du weh obiafra, na ha chuko keka biama.
Yes.
Weh mu jirohera, weh na so munne mdo. Oh, biadalo noomba. Honorable Sonja, I hope so you dey hear this one eh, eh. I greet you, sir. So, na so munne. Oh, ya bo na ada kwalamba, oh, you know, regardless of heni ro name. You know, they want, they want our spirits to. I got it. But they can't survive, they can't succeed in this one, okay? Now we dey here, some kangorone. Kaiga baniru, alalazu, umu biafra. Ka, alalaku alazu oh. Kaiga baniru, anyalalazu. Unu ma kwan, nigani rubundu. Umu biafra, ai ga baniru, kaiga baniru, kaiga baniru, alalazu. Ai ga baniru, anyalalazu eh. Iga ni rubundu. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Ah, wey, 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 wey. Eh, weh mujiri, eh, mo adistats, Adam, Adam stateless. Album ekko biafra. And state do, bo my states eh, so I belong to all states. Yes, sir. Asemo, kamjiri, thirty thousand a gemma wekwa do, no ko munne na, omu na. Nke bochi ta. Weh na si, koma ra idun, mama, na ha chuko keka biama.
Yes.
Eh, oh Chi.
Alright, one love oh. There were no. Mommy comfort, ina shiny.
Dalu.
Thank you baby. Dalu.
Hmm, akantawa.
Honorable Betty, nde woko wa ekele monu, wekono. Nde wochi. Se kwa yibe, mujisi ni ke oh.
Greetings you. I don't know whether Monita, no, no.
Eh, well, I just heard your voice now.
No, oh mommy comfort, I did say that.
Yeah, Nena, I answered. Eh, eh, Anu Romia. No. Dalu no oh.
Oh, thank.
Dalu.
Okeke bu no me oh. Say. Eh, nem, dalu.
Well. Akantawa oh, eh wo, akantawa oh. Eh wo, akantawa oh, nyakwa ki game well. Chi, this song is for you. Dalu Rina. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Dalu.
Nenaya, Nenaya, can we have you? Okay, sorry, let's have Okute B T V first.
Oh, alright.
So, Okute, eh, unmute yourself. Okute, unmute yourself.
Hmm, let's see if he's muted. Okay, Okute can unmute yourself now. Okay, you may not be. Alright, okay, so the network has dropped him. Let's go to Nenaya. Alright. Nenaya can unmute now.
Okay. Nde wono, nde biafra, nde wono, munne mno, monnam, in the central region. Nde wo, nde wo, jisi ni ke, onye wa eba, onye awo nu me.
My voice coming out.
Eh, eh, hold on, you will speak later, right, somebody have taken eh, your place, so after eh, Madan Nena you speak.
Okay. Okay, this evening I'm supporting central region with thirty a gemma. I will post the receipt to Mazi Abarawa. Nde wono, jisi ni ke. Eh wo.
Thank you, Wada, thank you very much.
There you are. Very much. Ah, kamarama kaiga kuro nenaba new. Ah, kamarama. Nenaya, God bless you.
Wada Nenaya, thank you so much, remember blessed, Okute can we have you now, thank you.
Oh, you can listen.
Good evening. No.
Our His Excellency. Honorable, Oge Chukunkere. I like, like, I can, I can delay. Thank you for your good work. Oh, the his last life, Kalonya Kede. Obobazo tiyambros.
Hmm hmm.
Ekene, kana dike la koma ne me. Oh, weh ke me kwa ozon.
Hmm hmm.
Obu la ma diu, ba diya, jagemma, na jagemma. Oh, the his.
Ah, oh.
Oh, the his. Ali, sini leme na ye. De levela, you know, since eh, oh, what you be do biafra everybody this level before. La, opu bo la abra wa, obu lift ke, yeah.
Hmm hmm.
Thank you very, very much. Um, before, um, contribute to my widows mind. Because, um. Allo state. Anya ma, anye leme lo allo state. Because Agusi. Eh, wo le go umu ya. Ne fe, eh, pwesu juxi ya, karamwa ono. So, Agusi is not working for, for the growth of Biafra. Which is eh, I call, I, 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 I recognize him as a former Allo State administrator. He's not, he's no more working with Allo. So, Agusi is no longer. Agusi is among those that plotted coup with a map. Understand? Agusi is among those that want to bring this freedom down by armist. Why working in ma? Former, um, Allo State, uh, deputy administrator, which is, which is working with Agusi. Stole Allo, Allo State money and was fired by our Prime Minister, Mazza Simon Eba. Now, Teddy, which is the Agusi deputy. Governor entered him, eh, now. The camp to Ngozi or Abes's camp. Then now, da the same devil enter Agusi, Agusi now want to bring this movement down. By using, um, a map. And in those, yeah, most, yeah, most here, so. I am using this medium to beg our atem Prime Minister. So, ka, M L E Banya lo. Makolo, the Kenya post stranded, because Allo State for the first ever. Eh, pwesu me la, September, September twentieth. A man and do, we are plot to, ah, ah, mo de coup. Anna. Agusi, Kenya jizi, the fundraiser, Merela, ya my god, this fundraiser, we srega. Also, I got a good pending for now. Eh. One eh, also not, oh, what do we?
Alright.
Hmm. Network.
Your network, yeah. Hmm.
Yeah, he's trying to join back, but he's already. Oh, we've lost him.
We. We lost Okute there because of bad network.
So, eh. So, ah, yeah, Okute, continue, if you are back.
Oh, Okute, unmute yourself.
Okay.
Unmute yourself, you've not unmuted yourself.
So, unmute yourself now, eh, Okute.
There were, no really, well, la. Obi yanaya. Um, getting to Trimos now. I don't know what's the network, and the network laugh by. Eh. The bull dies why. So, Kamwas Leu, before eh, the network, Akop. Agusi is no longer Allo State administrator. On, for now, Allo State. Ah, administrator. So, gele Banyala lo. May organize all. Because first ever fundraiser, eh, pwesrega lo. Ah.
Okute, etem eh, etem onye, monagipuru maka. Hmm, Okute?
Yes.
Eh, onwe hemonagipuru maka, oh, I am no no, no. Eh, onwe hemonagipuru maka, oh, because I am atana, always with admin. So. Eh, one no ta, eh, she, eh, bozo, abota admin inolo, monagipuru lo, piya na nde o zawa. So, nu ni na, nya, ka no, no, now. Ya, one call to serve. So, we, we move, we move you, we need you especially. Bring somebody for admin, let us coach him. Ona, eh, one yini maye, Maria, is only that if you are dedicated to do it, as you proceed, you keep learning. And you keep practicing yourself. Hmm. Because, lebra anya, anya na, although I have one agia before in the private, so we are now telling you, we are now open it to. Give us admin inolo.
No, no, okay, no problem. Then we'll work towards it. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Eh, thank you. Eh, again, I need to go, oh, I like, eh, Mazonyezo, Uwari State administrator, thank you very much, in fact, you work. Obaline with somebody like you, Allo State, I'm telling you, look, aroma, eh, by hapasre, eh, eh, no, no. Even, eh, Agusi no good ya. Uponinye ne pushiya, ka in, reziya, allo, allo, prebo pwesrepo. Then anye wa, onye, anye pweslimo, first ever fundraiser, eh, pweslimo, obias kata, nya, maybe the whole plan. But all is well, eh, we move. Um, eh, one yembawa, meren, ina lo bu makochor ya. Um, so, Mazi Sonja Abarawa, thank you very much for your work. Thank you for your doggedness, oh, the his. As like Kalonya Kede, obobazo tiyambros. Thank you, Madame Kiru, thank you, Tito, thank you, everybody that is working, Mazi Oku, thank you. Oh, the his. Bishop Comfort, thank you. I. Alam, alame guchiron. Oh, the his. We have put the critical. Onyobala mano, no, no, offense, I am begging everybody, forget ya your hatred, forget ya loving, what we are seeking now is, is, eh, eh, by leje rolenso. So, we are no, eh, oh, they want the fire again. The, the level, our atem Prime Minister take right now, any everybody are saying, so what you be do? This is eh, first and first time, I li, oku biafra, they rule at Washington, talk of eh, eh, gala White House. Oh, weh be, eh, weh be, onye me li alo wa, beto ge chukunkere, do li la, eh, to that level. So, ma homi ye get make some people, yes, who eh, no, no offense, okay, now. Nge one no, no offense, ina eh, che, eh, Mazi na mdekanu, eh, but now. Eh, bu stioto, adagari, say, kezi ya bu your fate. How do you want to now to get the Biafra, because Nigeria, as where go, then now they wa, eh, they want to give Biafra life imprisonment. Because obu de Mazi na mdekanu, eh, kano Kenya, eh, our Biafra Kenya, eh, so what is your fate? To prove them wrong. Eh, to make them know that Mazi na mdekanu abu Biafra, that's a single so abu Biafra, lot lo bu, anye chakwe tarrenen, eh, lo ba eh, Biafra. Igasi no, then fund this movement. Fund this liberation. Because the liberation laga to the extent, nge one ma hebo leru. But obu ma move, I le move. Well, thank you, and eh, also thank eh, General Igbetuza. Um, at least someone else, more meeting, oh, with my community, everybody was happy because. All I make, eh, le buto bagra, Igbetuza, thank you, at least I no more looking, day before is that was so happy. Because he be a great man. That only your voice, my community, no, no, every way they come. Ndele, eh, sile, kisie kwa, hancha. Onyobala, eh, dreji, di no, only one man's voice. Understand, oh, the his, Biafra no matter. Biafra no matter. So, let us support this movement, ino obuli di, toro bego, ask for bego, shishi bego, ino obuli tila movement, oh, gaga. And I eh, eh, what am no, no, eh, eh, ino ye, ino ye, nyani, abu freedom. Freedom is what we need. So, ka, eh, weh pu, every hatred, eh, 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 me, eh, oh, ge chukunkere, as gave eh, Biafra boyah, eh, di really, eh, di ala lo, eh, di ane ano. Eh, you, oh, se gave, eh, Biaka, nyaka, ka in cha zotan, no, no. Oh, you, oh, obu li weh se, weh di, oh, fi, oh, la, la, weh di. Bia, ka isotan, no, no, eh, Biafra, udo drono, dole, eh, alame, eh, my widows mind, eh, do five thousand a gemma, well, I support eh, today eh, central region fundraiser, udo drono, there were.
There were. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, how much, how much?
Five thousand.
Five thousand. Okay.
Feni dangima, boom. Oh, who they want, even more come out. Onye chi me reze na madra po hinayao. Oh, yo.
Oh, yo.
That was marvelous.
Yeah, thank you so much, Okute, you have been a wonderful comrades, thank you and God bless you. Let's have Fidel on the line. Fidel, unmute your microphone.
Yes, sir.
So, Fidel, one, unmute yourself, Fidel. Fidel, unmute yourself now.
Your mic is open now, you can just press some mute button. It's good, good.
Just touch, touch the, um, the surface of your phone, then you look at the left side, you will see the microphone there. Touch it if it is crossed, then it will open. Okay, um. Honorable Manike. Honorable Manike, let's have you, why he is still struggling with his move.
Honorable, go ahead, when you are ready.
There were no, thank you, Omo Biafra, and lovers of freedom.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome, sir.
I can hear them all, the honoreables and the ministers, no, no.
Me too.
Yeah. And eh, there were Madame K.
Thank you, sir.
There were Bishop.
And there were no. Now, one bit of flu, some managing.
Eh, wo, eh, wo, because you ni wa ya, eh. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, eh, take you fluid.
Yes, yes, yeah, ginger, everything.
Okay.
Dalu.
There were no. Because, eh, bad, 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 eh. So, I greet my F P M, um, and eh, the media team and Minister Abarawa. Uh. I also, eh, I'm glad to say that, um. Uh. That eh, I came through today, eh, can eh, can eh, delete chuku?
Okay, let it chite.
Because, yeah, because the most high is the one that controls everything. Greetings to eh, eh, B D F, greetings to them too. And greetings to our leaders that are. That are being toyed around with, you know, Mazi.
Thank you for all you do, it's very consistent. Go ahead. It's a twenty twenty A J M A. From Jack. Number go ahead. Yeah, I'm muted now, can just press the mute.
Uh, you struggling to unmute? Okay, unmute yourself now, uncode the number. You have a network issue?
Yeah, may- maybe, because he's unmuted, yeah.
There were.
There were.
There were ministers.
How is it going? How is it going?
Well, very well.
Very smooth.
Thank you, Central Region, thank you, thank you. Where are we on the program now?
The next one.
Still on cola, almost, uh, almost, uh, done, almost through, let's, we take cola break anyway.
Okay, let me play jingle while we continue to wake the house up.
Anywhere in Biafra land, we confront Fulani terrorists, we shall meet them head on. We know that they are part of the police and the army. Danjuma himself, General T Y Danjuma himself testified before the British Parliament that the army of Nigeria and the police are colluding in the conquest of indigenous populations in Nigeria. And we are no exception to that very horrible and sinister conspiracy. The police we have in our land are terrorists in uniform, the army we have in Biafra land are basically terrorists. They are there to aid and to support Fulani agenda with advancement to the Atlantic Ocean. And we are there to stop them, and we are stopping them, and will continue to stop them. A few days ago, as I said, we embedded our men and women of the Northern Command of Eastern Security Network. When we said Northern Command, people were confused, Biafra land is a nation, we have northern Biafra, we have central, we have the south, which is the coastal region, we have the east, and we have the west. When I talk about the Northern Command, I'm talking about the northern part of Biafra land, which incidentally starts from Benue State. So we are right to be there. If you don't want us to be in Benue State, quietly go back to Abuja and appeal to them. Tell them to release Igbo people in Benue and carve them back into a Bois state where they should belong, or any good state as the case may be. Therefore, anybody, you know one thing about Nigeria is that anywhere in Biafra land, we confront Fulani terrorists, we shall meet them head on. We know that they are part of the police and the army. Danjuma himself, General T Y Danjuma himself testified before the British Parliament that the army of Nigeria and the police are colluding in the conquest of indigenous populations in Nigeria. And we are no exception to that very horrible and sinister conspiracy. The police we have in our land are terrorists in uniform, the army we have in Biafra land are basically terrorists. They are there to aid and to support Fulani agenda with advancement to the Atlantic Ocean. And we are there to stop them, and we are stopping them, and will continue to stop them. A few days ago, as I said, we embedded our men and women of the Northern Command of Eastern Security Network. When we said Northern Command, people were confused, Biafra land is a nation, we have northern Biafra, we have central, we have the south, which is the coastal region, we have the east, and we have the west. When I talk about the Northern Command, I'm talking about the northern part of Biafra land, which incidentally starts from Benue State. So we are right to be there. If you don't want us to be in Benue State, quietly go back to Abuja and appeal to them. Tell them to release Igbo people in Benue and carve them back into a Bois state where they should belong, or any good state as the case may be. Therefore, anybody, you know one thing about Nigeria is that
Thank you so much, Honorable Sani Abarawa. Wonderful man. Um, uncode the number, can we have you now? Is your network stable? Uncode the number, can you unmute yourself? Okay, if you cannot, let's have a
You have not sent me, you have not sent me to a mood. And you asked me to, I was waiting for you to send me the, I just saw it now, thank you so much. Thank you, thank, maybe the something is delaying to the, eh, to come to the side, my side, I don't know. Because I was waiting for you to send me. Thank you so much for having me, thank you so much, everyone, my ladies and comrades, ministers. I greet you, um. There's something, eh, I don't know, yes, because we need to, no smoke, eh, anything we, our leader is, eh, despite everything, is when I hear that somebody touch our, touch our leader, Madam Kanado, I, I used to boil. I, I was, eh, said that a prison water in Sokoto, eh, hit our leader because he refused to wear contaminated prison clothes. He said no to it, and he has to beat our leader up, so I don't know if that, that news is, is authentic, I don't know, so.
It's flying on the media, because, eh, very soon you will also hear that, eh, they are poisoning our leader. It is part of, it is part of the message that they have to bring out side here, so that all of us will be in panic and then we will not be able to focus.
I, I, I'm not, it's real, it's real right, but that's the way.
They all know that, um, they have put themselves in one chance. So, if anything happens to Onyendu, it is not even Biafrans that, that will ask them, it is, eh, American government that will ask them. Because, eh, America already have the case file on their table, even before they started this, eh, shambolic nonsense. So please, um, even, eh, even, eh, Maxwell Opera, the attorney or the barrister had visited Onyendu today. Thing is, he has been dead for two days now, and today he left a message, I just posted the video out. He said, Onyendu said, you all should ignore every messages that they will be putting out in the media. You will hear, I hear say, I hear say, this happened, this happened, this happened, because it's a way of destroying your resolve. Yes, you need to do that so that they weaken your spirit. So please, ignore, eh, every news that is flying there. We communicate with the legal team of, eh, Mazembe Nndikano, so if there is anything, we will communicate to Biafrans the right way. Thank you so much.
Okay, sir, um, you say this, please, my people, eh, because, eh, there's, eh, some inferno, eh, I think inferno that, eh, um, bang up in Okusigo, and that is economy jihad, I want to tell a person, because our people are not paying attention. Um, and, eh, everything, you don't expect everybody to do anything, everything to be done to you, you yourself, you have to do something yourself, know that you're in a state of war, and cut some things, and minimize some certain things in order to save yourself. I said this something last time, when you are in every village, every village at all, you see that the Fulanis, in fact, I don't know why the Fulanis supposed to be in my village now, I don't know why. That the Fulanis could be there by now, but if at all that they, some of them are seeing your village, and you see them, eh, suddenly you see them back in there, moving out with their belongings. Don't take it for granted, something is about to happen, either attack, just, you think that, eh, you, when, of that kind of thing, then you have to put yourself in order. It's good when you are aware that something is coming, and you, you saw there's something coming, then they didn't take, but it doesn't taking you on our way. Even, even, even the person coming with the highest weapon, and the first one, he saw it coming, there's something you can do than that you take, you are taking on away. This is not the time of you sleeping every day, day time, over leave yourself, just take some siesta. At night, when women and children are sleeping, then twelve o'clock, you have to be awake till six o'clock. So, all something is happening, and the guest dog, put dogs in your compound, it can serve you or something, and again, still carrying baskets, as if they are selling, eh, something for women here. I've said this about that, let me repeat it again. Sometimes, you know, you, you overlook them, because they act like, eh, somebody who would die today, those children, don't organize them. Some of that thing they are carrying, sometimes when they are carrying, then you try to see, maybe women have to do this. They try to bring it down, they refuse, force them to bring it down, sometimes the content are one plastic, you used to put fuel. They are the people who use go and, and, and they soak that fuel, then other, throw the fire. And again, some of those things used to contain, it lose AK four seven, lose AK four seven. Don't take it for granted, whenever you want to bring it down, they refuse, call other women, force them to bring it down. Okay, force them to bring it down. When you see them entering with the children, don't overlook them, that children you see, that those child, that are ten years, eight years, they can disassemble AK four seven and assemble it back. That those women can operate it. Don't be alert now, because B D F will not be everywhere. It is due that we watch very well, when it's something that is suspicious, then you know how to communicate. Okay, this is not the time you begin to move around, do any harm, misbehave, you have to know that you are in state of war, and focus. And I'm pleading with that government, that this five Friday, I see that to, eh, see that to be implemented with the, with immediate effect. So this moron that playing on our road, we need to get rid of those, those morons on our road, they need, I owe him, thank you so much, good number.
So much.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here, uncode the number, thank you so much. I think the next person on our, this one is, eh, E O A Homeland. C O A Homeland. Can you unmute? E O A.
All right, eh, special greetings, as always, to all my honoreables. I just have, eh, a very simple thing to say. And then, it is those who have true direction, clear direction does not stumble on the way. Today, we have the clearest direction of our freedom. And there is no reason justifiable anywhere in heaven and on earth for us to stumble. So, we are marching with increasing flaming speed to worse our destination, which is freedom. That is that. I apologize for coming late. Um, I came late for today's meeting. Eh, there's a reason for that. And, um, right now, I have been searching for the cola plate so that I can pick one with five thousand A J, but I can't, eh, find it. Someone should show me the cola nut plate, so that I can pick one with five thousand A J.
Yeah, sorry, the cola nut was broke, eh, broken in, eh, in the homeland, where we can't, eh, expose our camera and ourselves. Please bear with us.
Is it not the homeland that I represent too? That I cannot find my cola nut plate? I should be a picture. This is not the first one.
No, we, we will show him here, we wash the plates, and, eh, eh, okay.
Okay, um, I only need to see the plate so that I can take, eh, my own, eh, part of it with five thousand A J. But, eh, since, eh, I can't find the plate, and you cannot show me now. Eh, I'm dropping, eh, on the table, the cola, five thousand A J, in the one.
See, oh eh, how can we reach you?
Okay.
I'm, I'm going a lot by here, I was really not
Honorable Sani, I wouldn't know if our A P M is ready for his, eh, address, or do we continue with?
I think, eh, I think Mama Comfort, I have her hand, eh, raised for a long time.
Okay, because
There were no.
There were.
Thank you for, thank you for what you are doing, eh, you could and I greet all of you in, in Jesus's name. A P M, I greet you. How much I'm working? When you know I'm missing, he care. And I can let all the ministers that are here as well. We could all offer you a clever one. Um, today, and I am so happy that, eh, this, this group has put this thing together, and it has been, it looks successful, successful. And I thank God for everybody who has donated. Eh, come, you Nakka, with thirty A J M A this evening. God bless you.
There were.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. There were, thank you, there were.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Ah, Bishop, thank you so much, thank you. Uncode the number, please, can you bring down your hands? Let's have, eh, Honorable Chima.
Hmm.
Eh, there were no.
Welcome.
There were no, there were no, um. I see, eh, she now, oh, 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 gee. But I know I'm here, five thousand miles now, I'm Iboji no na that three. I'm on, I'm on, I mean, in your comment, I'm going to use a game, man, eh. That's more, that's more Iboji muga from here, maybe two hundred thousand A J will be.
Oh, wow.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you, we appreciate. We appreciate you, Honorable Chima. Yeah, 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 we thank you so much, Honorable Chima. Um, can we have you again? You're always consistent.
Yes, eh, there were no, there were no. Anyway, more update from Wada, Ijoma. Only where Africa, Idiwa Okwado, Memine Meta. For Central Region, thank you. Wada Ijoma, eh, where Africa. Two thousand A J from Ifumisia. From Ifumisia. So, I'm where, eh, I'm where fine, I'm where why pull it back, my capable, eh, Allah Ba been awaiting. Honorable K Me para mistake, we popa Allah Ba again, because I maintain, oh, now, oh. Eh, as all do, only Woji, only thing do Woji. Woji will release now to buy, because, there were no.
There were.
There were.
It's all good.
Honorable Honor.
Two thousand A J.
Thank you. Thank you.
Honorable Honor.
Wada Ijoma from Ifumisia.
Honorable.
Okay, so I'm one, one single soul left over there, thank God.
Yeah. Honorica.
I give you.
Honorica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, eh, I thought, um, Honorable, uncode the number, you use, um, money to speak. So did we still or confirm what he said with money as well, before we endorsed it?
Eh, eh, yes, sir, yes.
I'm, I'm putting two thousand A J in support of, eh, uncode the number. I, 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 I find the, eh, eh, often money again, because.
So that is total of our money.
Yeah, okay, there were, eh, sorry, I have, shall I counter?
Yeah, enter, enter.
Uh huh, okay, there were, actually, Emma, we, we, we are the day too rush, rushing for everything, I, I've been waiting eh, to know what we come out of, eh, this, eh, motion. So, eh, first of all, I'll use a twenty thousand A J to counter that motion raised by uncode the number.
Oh, Diego.
Eh, yes.
In Okwa.
With, eh, with, eh, reason.
What are you calling it, if you can't tie it?
Eh, okay, eh, wait, um, one.
Wait, to, eh, Master, eh, wait, as you okay, chere, chere, chere. Eh, please, anybody that is to talk in this very motion, you have to use a J M A to talk inside the motion. Because I had a minister come for contact now, he, he not, he not tell us why. And now she's talking, so if you want to talk in this motion, you have to talk with the J M A to counter or to seal. So, Master, you can continue.
So, okay, thank you, thank you very much, the first time I'm getting justice in this, eh, in this, eh, platform. Thank you, Honorable, so, eh, what, eh, why I counter that motion is to correct the impression. Eh, actually, eh, Allah Ba is not, eh, a Yoruba or Oduduwa, eh, award. Eh, Allah Ba is, eh, form of, eh, acronym, abbreviation, as our people used to, eh, identify the button. Button, you know, in those days, the poli, eh, police, what they are known for is the button, the stick that they used to, used to, it is that stick, that in form of, eh, eh, baseball, baseball, eh, eh, um, eh, eh, stick. That is what we know Allah Ba, the police, in those days, and that is why, where that name come from. And it came from the word, from Bend area. Allah Apara. In a Bend area, there is also a word relating to, eh, Allah, I had I said, Ma Alaga Akka. Ma Alaga, Ma Alaga Akka, that is, eh, eh, no word. That area, Abreba, Hafia, and that area, so from that word, we now nickname it Onya, eh, Ma Alaga Apara. Ma Alaga Apara, or Mbo. Mbo is also an Igbo Biafran word. So, in form of that stick, that is known with the police in those days, Koto Ma, Banapoha Koto Ma. That is, eh, 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 talk truth, where is your, how long it that you see, you start to talk truth. So, it is from there that the nickname comes. Eh, the nickname, eh, there is Allah Apara, eh, there is Allah Apara. Yes, so that is where that name come, it sounds, eh, eh, Yoruba word, but it is not a Yoruba, eh, word. That is just a, a combination of these two abbreviated Igbo, eh, eh, dialectical words with, eh, eh, Allah, Ilo, Akka, Elo.
Yes, just to slap or to beat.
Yes, it's just a slang, eh, kind of. Another reason, the I G you suggested is not a known word, it's also a contaminated one. Eh, they say that, eh, after, eh, two, eh, between two evils, you must choose one. So this one is, um, eh, indigenous African, what has to say, assuming it is. Eh, compared to this one, that is also, eh, I go, I go treated the British word, I G, Inspector General. No, so that is why I have to counter that motion, so anyone who want to supporting cannot come up and, eh, you know, put something on the table and support the you. Eh, we love our, eh, eh, Onu Woji for, eh, residents and, eh, oh, please, Indianapolis, I did, I did a title, I gave off it, yeah, well, well. He hold the cap, please, let him wear it. So, uncode the number, his hand is there up, so, uncode the number.
My, my, my hand is up as well.
Yes.
Hmm, I, I support, eh, okay, eh, Allah Ba, I, eh, we love Allah Ba. So forty thousand goes to, okay, and Allah Ba, that's my support.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Wada Dema.
Hey, hey, there were. Wow.
You see, can.
Where could that be? Hey. Okay. Okay, um, twenty thousand A J, twenty thousand A J, twenty thousand A J, to counter, after we back. Allah, eh, eh, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Allah Ba, Minrosis, Allah Ba. Allah Bu, Onye, Onye Sisi, Allah Ba, so, most I had, Allah Ba, that one, the particular one, we pronounce.
You, you have also, Mora, I saw Sisi, Mora, Mbo.
Done, hold on. No, hold on, hold on. If I talk again, you have to pay, if I must talk, you have to pay. Yes, that. So, Allah Ba. Allah Ba, calling before, that one is a Yoruba, uh, this thing, it's nowhere known, if the animal who, if the animal know what is Allah Ba. Okay, so maybe the one, I want to tell you that, I, you, my, the IG, you may not like that one, but you can call her, or the, or the Biu. Or the Biu, yes, but that one, um, Allah Ba, it sounds somehow, it sounds so, uh, derogatory, or it sounds so sheep. Our, our, yeah, it's too beautiful to be, as a corner, Allah Ba, look at that number, or what you, Allah Ba, uh, are you, look at it now, but it's sort of, uh. I don't. The previous was said, yes, yes, yes.
Mm hmm. That's what.
My corner.
They were my, my honorable, honorable Parawa. Then they were, they were my AP, I make a new one.
No.
All my brethren, yeah, of Central, they wonu. I don't understand, um. I don't understand, so, um, concerning the argument on the table, I'm just gonna, there is one, um. One video that I watched, it was, uh, proving that, uh, Yoruba is actually corrupted Igbo that they are speaking. Okay, he said that the Yoruba language, he mentioned there's several words, how they corrupted it and turned it into Yoruba. So that's where I'm gonna leave that one, but then the, the more important, more serious one is, um, I want to support what, uh. Call the number said, the warning that he sounded. This is the very precarious period for our people back home. Okay, we should tell our people to be prepared, be vigilant, okay, as we said during the war. Only in the war, 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 other, 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 I love war, I'm a behalf of our, our, okay, so. Our people need to be very vigilant, so, uh, Coach, I have him myself, who I've been, uh, listening to what he's saying. His very, very, um, secretive prediction that he made, uh, always on, on point, he said that the. That the Polynesians, um, this, they proved out like a, a week ago or so. But then they have come back with more, more than a thousand, and he said that the police are aware of it, and they have arrived at Kogi. So, but they are still trying to head down south. So, so every one of us should be very, very secretive conscious, our people should not be, should not be, you know, take this one lightly. This is a period where they know that this is their time, either they get to, get to the ocean now, or they will never make it. Because, uh, you know, they, they, they know that the US is coming, and we are getting help, so please warn everybody. To be very, very secretive conscious, okay, all, all the people, you just go, you know. You know, be careful, be, be vigilant, um, you know, one people, everybody to be conscious, Uncle Number mentioned that if you see them. Don't just pay blind eye, investigate those people, you know, investigate them. Monday, I have to paint a book, paint that is, you know, tell them, you don't want to paint anything, and you don't want to see them around that place anymore. Okay, so, we won't count, and then to, um, I'm going to represent my EK, the number people. With, uh, and welcome APM to Central Region with a hundred and fifty AJ, ma. Alright, my APM, welcome, we keep praying for every one of you, especially our angels, our holy angels back in the land. We pray for you folks, um, most I will surely grant us victory, we are almost there, so, if, nobody should have ventured it. Don't mind the Shania Nigans, these people are doing, they are just exposing themselves. And, um, like one of them was talking about, uh, the, you know, about, uh, prison, prison behavior, I told him, yes. The prison rules you stated is, is, is for you, by time, you're gonna get there soon, and when you get there, all these rules you stated, you find that they don't apply for you anymore. Alright, so, so, don't mind anybody that is trying to, to affect your faith. Just trust the most high, we're gonna get Biafra, and we're almost there, thank you, thank you, my, my brethren. I will support, uh, today's town hall meeting with a hundred and fifty AJ, ma. Um, my rep will confirm when I send in the receipt, thank you. They won.
They won.
Please, let it why I sing for Honorable Kill Love, are, are we combining them?
Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you very much, my honorable Minister of Information and, and my honorable person in the house, I will not waste much time. Uh, I'm just going to support with fifty thousand AJ, uh, for me, thank you very much. And, uh, I also, uh, support the adoption of, uh, Odomi Wu. So I, I think maybe if we can keep it that way, but you know, uh, anyways, I will leave it there, thank you very much, God bless each and every of us.
Mm hmm.
With, with ten thousand, with extra ten thousand AJ, making it sixty thousand, because. You catch me, you catch me for there.
Very well, okay.
No, my heart, those was there up, nah, you know, go down, you go there up, until you will be afraid with, with this church, anyways. No, no, thank you so much, that my, my career, you be, uh, I go to call my lady Allah Ba, Allah Ba, very, very sort of. Odebi Wu, only Odebi Wu, with the ten thousand AJ, totally is, um, uh, forty thousand plus thirty thousand, that money I have to pay here is seventy thousand. Please, I hope you, um, um, no, eighty thousand, fifty before plus twenty, plus ten, that is eighty thousand, hey, so, that is it. Uh huh, that's the total, I have to pay, so, uh, we support that, Odebi Wu, only Odebi Wu, or, yeah, or those Wu, or those Wu. Not Allah Ba, Allah Ba must will be wiped out, we have to bring another one, uh huh. Of I know, I, I'm.
Thank you very much, uh.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Alun. Uh. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't. Never see light, please, and say, bring torch again, yeah, so. He has Yoruba, he has Yoruba, he has Yoruba, he has Yoruba, police, oh, Allah Ba. They, Biafra. Now, boy, I only Woji. Yeah, so. He has got that boy, I only Woji, only Woji, I hate you, man, I.
And again, remember, we have to be very careful. Everything Abor Ego, everything of the month. I know we are, we are responsible. We have to do the right here. Oh, you would you can I go and I. Oh, you would you want you my yeah, I will. Alone.
Alone. Alone, I am late.
Thank you very much.
You.
Regent Fury, you see what?
Uh, uh. Okay, before, 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 make my donations and talk. So, uh, A P M will give his speech today, but on this, uh, on this matter that is on ground. I want to support you guys. Which one thousand AJ from a creative circle with the color Malakpa, Malaba. So instead of, uh, a lot, I think it's better we will go with a lot by your best friend. So that's all. A lot by yes. A lot by with the color. So that one is even better than, uh, the way I usually. So that's what I just want to say with the one thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you for the number.
Hmm. I want to support Regent Fury with that or Lapa. Instead of for Lapa, since that a lot, a lot is in, is on debate. Let me support the Regent Fury with a Lapa. Uh, hey, because that name makes us happy. That's all, 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 hey. It makes you fun. Alright, so thirty thousand AJ to support Regent Fury with the Lapa name instead of a Lapa. So let's put it on. Um. Not, not really, no, no, not really. Yeah, was okay, you can put up a decision on this one. Whether the Lapa or Lapa or would you? Right. You so much.
Thank you. Oh, yes, are you there? Oh, yes, eh? Are you there? Our network, definitely. Alright, um, in his absence, we will be welcoming our honorable A P M. Okay, Adeu Chenna, go ahead, make it, uh, rapid because of your network. Adeu Chenna. Adeu Chenna, omit yourself. Adeu Chenna, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, good evening, everybody.
There were.
There were.
Yeah, thank you, my brothers, for the good work that we are doing. I just want to support, I just join the speech. The fundraiser now. So I'm just about to with the one thousand AJ. Anyhow, anyhow. Anyhow. So look, I just took that one. Copy of the one of yesterday. We will put a small, 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 small drop of water will make an ocean. So good to go, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Ah, Ramarama Kai Gakuru. You send a box, yo. Ah, come. Thank you, Mister Adeu Chenna. Yeah. Okay, put on your hand.
Thank you. And at this point, we welcome our honorable acting prime minister to the stage, His Excellency T. Tokinadu. The man of the moment, the man that has caused Nigeria water, water in Washington, they said. The other people welcome you to the Central Region Town Hall Meeting, there were A P M.
There were, thank you, thank you, thank you, many top information, as is Tony Borawa. You are the, and the entire media team. We appreciate what you are doing. Special greeting to Biafran Republic Government in Gaza. Ministers, honoreables, members of the cabinet, rep and admin. We salute you, the Biafran people, really appreciate the hard work that you have been putting on. Thank you very much. And we salute our leaders, our heroes, our leaders currently that are fighting, doing everything they can for our freedom. We appreciate all they're doing. And as long as our leaders are not giving up. They still hold on to their promise to fight for the freedom of Biafran people. We will never forget them. We always remember them in all we do. We appreciate their sacrifice. And we pray, may our God, Jehovah God, to quote, give them the strength, the energy, the spirit to keep holding on. Very soon, they will be free. Very soon. Biafran people, will regain their freedom. Our leaders in detention represent Biafrans being in detention. As long as they lock them up, we Biafrans are all locked up with them. But little do the enemy Nigerian terrorist know that holding our leader Mazinamdekan that we embody and even threatening us more. This enemy team, this evil seed that these Fulani strangers in other people's land are showing it will backfire them. And if they are not careful, we might not forgive them. They have to do what is right for all to have the spirit of forgiveness. Nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, we know what happened. They waged a genocide war against the Biafran people. We still have the pain in our hearts. We are trying to coexist to make this work. But they are making the matter worse. And on the other hand, the Middle Belt, some part of the Middle Belt are Biafrans. Some part of the Middle Belt are carved from the former Enugu State and Abu Instate. They are still our family. We can wait until they will rise up as well to fight with us. During the war, during the genocide war from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, the Middle Belt and the northern part of Nigeria, where the South West, they are colluded with the foreign allies Nigeria have as of that time. The Britain that is falling down, the Britain that is collapsing every day with Russia, the former Soviet Union. They are colluded and bombed the Biafran people. We might not forgive or forget. We still have the pain in our heart. Knowing how the massacre Biafran people. Seeing how millions of innocent childrens are being starved to death. It's painful when we reflect and think about what they did to us. We Biafran Christians are trying, doing everything humbly possible to try to pull the pieces back together, so we can live a normal life and move on. Before we re-declare Biafran in Latin Finland, December second, twenty twenty-four, we Biafrans, everywhere in Nigeria, where you find a Biafran, they contribute to that society, they contribute to that community. They blend and mingle, sometime even in Tamara. Some Biafrans speaks Hausa Futhu language, more than the people that actually own the language. Some Biafrans speak Yoruba more than the Yoruba people. Every city like, city like Lagos. Biafrans are the economic hub of Lagos state. Biafrans develop Lagos state, that is a fact. They are the exporters and importers. Biafrans even sell to swampy shit hole area and build businesses and houses there. They try live and let live. They try, they show humility. They show brotherly love. They show kindness. They try to forget the past and move on. But these terrorist neighbors that we have, they always want to remind us what we try to forget. How over sixty, seventy major generous, I mean, over sixty, seventy percent of major generous that bombed and killed Biafran people are from the Yoruba Oduwua Republic and the Middle Belt, of which Go On is from the Middle Belt. We sympathize with our brothers and sisters from the Middle Belt. I mean, the Christians, I don't mean the terrorists over there. I mean, the Christians, because they see our brothers and sisters. We feel their pain and their sorrow. Is it because of the atrocity they commit against Biafran people? That is why what is happening to them today. They didn't see it coming. Where is Go On? He probably somewhere in United Indon. Doing what? Receiving medical treatment or what? Why is it that Go On after killing Biafrans, he not able to build a well-befitting medical center in Middle Belt? What a shame. What a disgraceful shit hole butter country. I keep saying it. If I have what it takes, we will have Stodom and Gomorrah, part two. I will say, our God in heaven, Jehovah, let me do this. I will blow a trumpet and ask everyone who don't want to go down with that shit hole disgrace country called Nigeria to come out of Nigeria, to come out of the zoo that the zoo is about to go down, that the zoo have fallen. Everyone who adhere to that instruction will see the light of the day. Everyone who adhere to that instruction will live again. But whoever refuse to come out from that shit hole country are we burn everything down. Then we start a new generation. We have a new beginning. A new beginning that will just be white and whiter than snow. A new beginning that will be pure. Where we have genuine and honest people. Because the evil of Nigeria is beyond human being imagination. I've never seen. At my age today, I have never seen any country that is so wicked. When I say wicked, hardcore wicked like Nigeria. Look at what happened in Lake Toget. Tunubu ordered military to shoot Nigerian citizens even flying their green and white flag. They shoot these innocent protesters that are just asking, demanding for freedom. Demanding for a better country. And the government of that day, the government of Nigeria, kill these people. They order the military. Military that supposed to protect the civilians. They arm these militaries. These forcemen to kill their own citizens. Why did America find themselves in Iraq? Back in the year, I believe two thousand. I believe two thousand and, uh, two thousand and two. Is it not because Saddam Hussein, quote unquote, have weapon of mass destruction? And he started destruction by killing his own people? According to the United States of America intel. When the government are supposed to protect his own people, his citizens, result to be the enemy of the people. What does, what does that tell you? That government have failed woefully. A failed state. Here in United States of America, over twenty years ago, somebody walked to me while we are discussing, he told me that Nigeria is a failed state over twenty years ago. If you are one of those believing in Nigeria, you need to visit a psychiatrist hospital. You need to be evaluated. We just want to make sure your brain is working properly. Can you tell me one thing Nigeria have offer you? That you saw, that you'll be so proud, wherever you go, you will tell people I'm in Nigeria. Here in Duspor, once you mention the name Nigeria, first of all, the ID you or profile you, they already start looking at you like a criminal, like who knew? Because they know Nigeria breed criminals. Peter Obi, former presidential candidate, made it clear. Peter Obi said Nigeria breed criminal. If Nigeria breed criminal, the current president of Nigeria is a drug lord. Tunubu, that is why Tunubu can not visit United States of America here. Because back in the eighties, he is charged and indicted on drug charges. What about Shetima? Shetima is a co-founder of Boko Haram. Is what Obi said, is he making sense? That Nigeria breed criminals. The number one citizen of this disgrace shit hole country called Nigeria, of which we call Nigeria Zoo Animal Kingdom. Because a lot of people that don't want to do what is right behave like zombies. When you try to save their lives, they ask you question, why are you saving my life? Just like someone in middle of the ocean being drowned, I you try to save that person's life. And this person will in turn ask you, why are you dragging me out from this deep water? Of which just less than few seconds or a minute, that person will be drowned. Some people instead of choosing light, they decide to choose darkness. Nigerian citizens can say that Nigeria is not working for them and they see decide to fall victim. In this shit hole country called Nigeria, there is no steady electricity. In this disgrace shit hole country called Nigeria, there is no seaweed system. In this disgrace country called Nigeria, there is not good infrastructures. In this shit hole country called Nigeria, there is no good hospitals, no good schools. Everything in that country is shit hole disgrace. Instead of the people of Nigeria to embrace light, over seventy, eighty percent choose darkness. When they know their problem, they refuse to speak up. They are let pick up just for pass, just for to say, oh, I say something. My fellow citizens, if you're a Biafran, you are not fighting for Biafran, you don't believe in Biafran, you are a Nigerianist. Just few days ago, Obi Kubana says something about the sentencing of our leader Mazinamdekan as this one Nigerianist. Where have he been for the past ten years? Since twenty twenty-one, when our leader Mazinamdekan was kidnapped from Kenya and the extraordinary rendition, they are extraordinary rendition him from Kenya. Obi Kubana, we haven't hear your voice. But you dear, having fun, merry met here and there. Going about your normal business, but you forgot. The terrorists, they are in your land, trying to take over your land. Obi Kubana forget that these terrorists are raping his family members. What about the one they call Kubana Chief Priest, the same? Where have these people been these years? What about Iweala, something the former World Bank Director, whatever? They are not be speaking, but lately, they just want to say something. These people are one Nigerianist. We know who you people are. What about Bianca? This Jezebel evil woman that will live in cause for the rest of her life, very evil. When it's time to arrest Mazie Simonewa in Finland, this evil Jezebel quickly run to Finland to have meetings. Evil woman. Cause woman. When it's time for United States of America to intervene against the killing of Christians in Biafranland and against the killing of Christians in Nigeria, this evil woman quickly ran to United States of America. After the sentencing of Mazinamdekan, the same evil woman stated that is not a decision or what they expected. What is this evil Jezebel woman expect? These are people that want our leader dead. Nigeria breed criminals. The same way they breed to be a criminal. A fraudster. For some time, he been quiet. Just trying to monitor what is going on. For few days now, he's, he's already in his campaign. Start to talk about twenty twenty-seven. Why his fellow Biafran been persecuted? Why Biafrans have been behaved by this Islamic jihadist terrorist? Why Biafran land is being militarized by this terrorist country called Nigeria? Peter Obi, evil man. He don't see that, he don't speak about. Iweala or whatever, they don't see that, they don't talk about. Obi Kubana and companies don't talk about. Is he the illegitimate governors, this useless people? They have sold their soul to the devil with this, their evil occult chamber, dark evil, goddess they all belong to. The one from a former abbot called Ot. Short engine, he ran out to say he have a solution. He's coming with a new strategy, add this fool. For how many years now? Where is that strategy? They can scam us, deceive us, do all manner of way. do all manner of ways with their evil, how to bring the Biafran people down, how to destroy us. But we promise them, we will never forget. It might take time, the minds flow, the process of our total freedom. But our promise is that we will never forget. We will hold all of them accountable. Hope holds all them mind. I hope you are happy now. Are the man who you supposed to call your brother? You allow the enemy to mishandle him, to jail him, to torture him, to kill his mother, his father. I don't know how you evil people sleep. So Ludo, I don't know if you have shame at all. Five years ago, you run to people of Anambor, you play the game, you won their vote that you will be able to release Mazin Namdekan just to deceive the people of Anambor to vote for you. Today, you don't talk about Mazin Namdekan. Is there a member, Omai? Where is devil Mai? Where is the former governor of Abia State? Ogikalu, Ozogikalu? My fellow citizens, have you all forget about Russia, Sukrocha? We need to compile all these evil people name. Time is coming, we will visit all of you. One after another. If we don't get hold of you, we'll get hold of your wife because you are work together. None of you family members have come to condemn what you all are doing. You and your family members are all in this together. We come after you. If you're not available, your wife, your children, everything that answer, your name, your last name, your first name, your lineage, we hold them accountable. All of them will not forgive, will not forget, unless if you call people come out and correct this mess. Even if I you back, if I you back might have passed away, we did not forget your family because that's your evil blood. We don't want this evil children that you have live in Biafranland to come and be a problem tomorrow. They will answer when the judgment of Biafran begin. All the sabotwares, all the evil people, pack your load. Go to Zamfara. Go to Abuja. Go to somewhere else. Go and leave there. Leave Biafranland alone. We will not forgive you people. All of you that conspiracy to call us name, to tag us, to call us terrorists, of which we are not terrorists. If Biafran people are terrorists, I Mazyo Gichukuncre. I will not be going to Washington this day having meeting with top US lawmakers, the men and women that make laws that govern this free world. We are not terrorists, they know that. They know we are fighting a just cause. Cause to be free from this Islamic jihadist terrorists, from this Fulani husband, from this this shit whole country. Country that if I have what it does, are we burning to ashes. I'm not taking my word back. Because that country called Nigeria have destroyed thousands and millions of innocent souls alive. Every day when you go to social media, you turn on the TV, news that are coming from that country is all about. This amount of people have been massacred, this amount of people have been kidnapped, have been behaved. What a shit hole disgraced country. You that it have never getting to, might think you are safe. You are not. If you don't get to you now, to get to you tomorrow. If it is not your turn today, it might be tomorrow. And for those that are laughing, thinking it's business as usual, you are just laughing at your death. Years ago, when our leader Mazin Namdekan keep preaching the gospel that is Islamic jihadist terrorists, they are coming, they are in your forest. Even in the southwest forest, in the Odudua Republic people's forest. They were laughing at him. They call him name. But today, the Yoruba people are crying too. My problem with them is that if they know Nigeria is not working, if they know their land is being terrorized by this Islamic jihadists, why have they colluded with the same Fulani government? Why have they colluded with the same Fulani people? To work against Biafran freedom. It's true, we have some sabotwares, we have enemy within. We know how we deal with our enemy within. But for the Odudua Yoruba people, I don't see any reason why they derive joy in killing Biafran people, in working against Biafran's freedom. If the Yoruba people have not joined the Middle Belt and the north part of Nigeria to fight against the Biafran people, the outcome of the war would have been different. But our Basanjo proudly go harder with the Yoruba troops to support the Nigerian terrorist government to kill Biafrans for us to surrender. Biafran people did not surrender because we are losing the war. It's because of the children that are dying in thousands every day because of the blockades caused by the British evil people. Britain, how far? British government, I believe you are smiling, you are doing good. Because the same terrorists that you all support to fight against Biafran people, they are now in your doorstep. There is some part of Britain today that you cannot even preach the gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ. There is some power of Britain today that even the British citizens can't even have freedom of speech, can't even express themselves. They will stone them to death. Some part of Britain today practice Sharia law. Could have been a welcome development if the British Empire with the Russians, if they can come and welcome all these Islamic jihadist terrorists to their own country since they love them so much, since they decide to work with them, since they can coexist with these terrorist groups, with these Islamist terrorists. I believe it will be a welcome development. If they can invite over these twenty-two terrorist group in Nigeria today and give them a safe heaven for them to live in Liverpool, in Manchester, in Arsenal, that will be a welcome development. Because they can coexist because they love them so much. What a shame how the mighty are falling. We played with the leader of the free world, United States of America. I Mazyo Gichukuncre, acting prime minister of Biafran Republic government in Gaza. I've been saying this for some time now. What happened in Afghanistan? We played with United States of America not to let that happen. If America sponsor or fund Nigerian military in the name of to fight these terrorists or to counter these terrorists, that means automatically United States of America is part of this killing of Christians. Because any arm that end up in the hand of Nigerian terrorist state, the Nigerian terrorist state will use the same arm to kill the innocent Biafran Christians and the innocent Christians in Nigeria. And if United States of America decide to do that, we want to remind them that means they part and person of a country that sponsor terrorism. We want them to practice what the to practice what they preach. If they preach to fight the terrorists, they should disease from sponsoring Nigerian military. Over eighty percent of Nigerian military personnel are terrorists. If United States of America in the name, quote unquote, that they are going to work with the Nigerian state in the name of to counter terrorism, we want to tell the United States of America that they are part of those that are killing the Christians. It best they work with Biafran, BDF to counter this terrorism. We want to remind them what happened in Afghanistan. After America train over two hundred thousand personnel and America spent billions of dollar, if not trillion, not one billion, not two, not three. And all the military hardware, the fighter jets of America, the finest of all different type of equipment. After the United States of America withdrew from Afghanistan. The Afghanistan military surrender everything to Taliban. And who is the governor of Afghanistan today? They are the same people America call terror. They are the same Taliban. And the Taliban are using the military hardware that America left with the Afghanistan military, they are using it to sponsor terrorism all over the world. In Nigeria today, where you have over twenty-two terrorist groups, America finest hardware, weapons are in the hand of Boko Haram, are in the hand of ISIS, are in the hand of ISWAT. We played with United States of America to trade with caution to stop sponsoring terrorism. When you allow your military hardware to end in the hand of the terrorists, automatically you are not practicing what you preach. Automatically you sponsor the terrorists. You can go behind closed door and sponsor the terrorists and come on camera and talk about how you will fight the terrorists. Work with Biafran Defense Force that are fighting against these terrorists that have come to kill the Biafran Christians. If Biafran regain her freedom today, Biafranland can be a safe heaven for the Christians from Middle Belt, from Benwell, from Platoon. They can come to Biafranland, we will welcome them. And when we regroup all, we regroup our turf in Biafranland and liberate the Middle Belt. If the Middle Belt are not ready to fight to liberate their land, we urge them to support the Biafran people. After Biafranland is totally liberated, we all with people liberate the Middle Belt. And for the Odudua Yoruba southwest, if they are not ready to leave Nigeria, we don't want them to be stumbling block. We don't want them to be stumbling block for Biafran freedom. We don't want what happened in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy to repeat itself. When our wallow was supposed to go re-declare Odudua Republic, rather they collude with the Nigerian terrorist state to fight the Biafran people. Few days ago, I heard where some are saying our problem is not the Yoruba. Our problem is the Biafrans that are sabotaging what we are doing. If you go to Israel today, while Israel is fighting Hamas, trying to kick the terrorists out of their land or trying to destroy these terrorists, Israel has sabotwares among them. Israel have some Israelis that are working against them. It is normal. If you go to Russia today, not every Russia believe that Putin make the right decision to fight or to invade Ukraine. You have some Russians that are working against the Russian people and the Russian. If you go to Ukraine today, you have some Ukrainians that are working against Ukraine. Even here in United States of America, never a time that everyone will come to agree, hundred percent. You also have those that will sabotage the effort of United States of America. That is the fact. We don't want the Odudua Republic to point fingers to Biafrans that are sabotaging the Biafran people and use that as excuse that we are the problem or our problem is from us. Leave our problem with us. They are our people. Will we deal with that? Every country in the world, they have their domestic problem. We don't want the Yoruba people to interfere because of that and use that as excuse because of this unity within us, within our people. If you are a Biafran, living in the north. If you are a Biafran, living in the north, we plead with you. Consider relocating. Consider investing in Biafran land. If you are Biafran, living in the southwest. We plead with you. Your life is very important. We love you. We want you to live. We don't want you to be a victim when time come. We don't want you to be a victim of these people that hate you with passion. Consider relocating to Biafran. Consider investing in your own territory. Consider investing in your own land. Consider making your land, the Biafran land, great again. Consider making your land, the Biafran land, safe again. Consider making your land, Biafran land, secure again. Consider making your land, Biafran land, wonderful and inhabited, inhabitable again. Don't come with no excuse that there is no security in your land. You can make a difference. You can sponsor and fund our security. Your help is needed. Your home is your home. Recovered few years ago. During the chumbo evil election of that shit hole demonic country called Nigeria. In the Yoruba land, in the Yoruba territory, especially in Lagos. When some of you went there to cast your vote, what happened? They asked you to go back to your own Biafran land and do what? And vote? At the time, they used the word that you don't belong there. They tell you go home. The same country that some of you are doing everything you can to be part of. The same country that some of you are doing everything you can to be accepted, to wait, to be welcomed. They are telling you both directly and indirectly that you are not in Nigeria. Hi, China kid. Shine your eye on my fellow citizens. When the so-called country Nigeria rejects you, call your name that you are not in Nigeria. Is it now high time you fight for who you are? Is it now high time you fight as a Biafran? In the same so-called country that supposed to be a secular country or nation, Nigeria is never a nation. It just is a fraudulent country. You have two laws. One law for the north, one law for the south. What does that tell us you? My fellow citizens. Do you want to be governed by Sharia law? Sharia law is not law of our land. We don't know what is here, what is, what that is. We have our own laws. We have our own way of life. We have our own lifestyle. We have our own religion. We are Christians. We are Biafrans. We are not Muslim. We don't worship the god of Allah, Kobakho. That like to kill innocent children. We don't worship the god. That stole the blood of the innocent. We don't worship the god that behead women, children. We don't worship the god that rape women. We don't worship the god that treat women like second-class citizens. We don't worship the god. That treat women like animals. We don't worship the god that don't give women freedom. Our own god in our land. Give women the privilege, the same with the men. Our own god in our land created us all equal. Created us all to respect ourselves. Created us all to love one another. Created all us to live and let live. Create all of us, both the men and women, to play a vital role in our society. That is why over hundreds and thousands years ago, even till today. Our mothers, our women can address a whole congregation in Biafran. They have said, when there is problem. They are invited to come and preside and judge and rule over matters. Because we treat them equal and we respect them. That is the god we worship. Look at what is happening today. Honorable Minister of Information, please, there is this video I want you to play of Shekou. Shekou Gumi, I believe that's this terrorist name. Please, can you just play this video while I, I wrapped up this address here today, please? It's very important. Is AI? Alright, thank you very much. But according to what that video is saying, that is exactly what is happening in Nigeria. Nigeria have. Two different system. One system to the north. One system for the south. The northern part of Nigeria, I don't know last time I checked, what is this course? For a student. To be admitted into the university. Honorable Minister of Information, what is this course for, for the north?
Three percent.
And what is, what about?
Three percent.
And my fellow citizens, and you want to tell me, is, is one country, right? One Nigerian. Tell me what make it one. Where the north will score one percent to be admitted into the university. And the south will score ten percent before they can gain admission. And what about employment? The north have over hundred percent chances of being employed. Than the south. Why the south have less than twenty, thirty percent of being employed? And you tell me is the same country. Mazi Nandikano, what is his crime? His crime is to have a better country. At a time where he start his campaign for freedom. He asked for restructuring. The same that our leader Ojuku asked for. Restructuring. Like the north, they can practice their Sharia. The south can practice what they want to practice. The north can manage their resources. The south can manage their resources. And at the end, the north will come with a percentage tied to the federal. The south will come with same percentage tied to the federal. So we can all practice federalism. What happened? They turn it down. Our leader Mazi Nandikano tried, it didn't work out. He try everything he can humiliate possible. Then when he found out. That this Islamic jihadist country, what they trying to do is to turn Nigeria to Islamic country. To Islamize the whole region. And for Islam to dominate and to rule both the Christians. How will you, how will you as a Christian even survive in a Sharia law? How will you as a Christian survive with law that you know nothing about? For you to survive, you have to succumb to their religion. You have to be Islamized. You have to abandon your god, Jehovah God, Chukwukabian. And worship their god that rape women and children. You have to abandon your god and worship their god, the law of terrorism. For you to survive, you have to abandon your lord and save your Jesus Christ. And worship their god of the jihadist. That is exactly what they want. Then when our leader Mazi Nandikano find out that we can never be Islamized. We can never leave our god. We not ask for our separate country. So we can go back to who we are over hundred and twenty-two thousands years ago. That is the reason why he was fighting for freedom of his people. They did not arrest him for any weapon, gun or machine. According to quote-unquote what they arrest him for. That they arrest him with, holding a microphone. That he is inciting violence, that he is, is preaching the gospel of freedom. He's educating his people how to be free from this disgrace country. Just few days ago, after they kidnapped him. They extraordinary rendition him from Kenya in twenty-twenty-one. They pronounce. Jail sentence yesterday, two, a few days ago. Then what about Shekou Gumi? What about all these terrorists that Tunubu? And the Tunubu wife that call herself a Christian? And Shetiman, Boko Haram. They knew where all these terrorists hide at. Tunubu and Shetiman, the government of Nigeria sponsored the terrorists with millions and billions. Why didn't they go after them and arrest them? These terrorists that are killing children that they have identified. How many of them have they brought to book and arrest? And sentenced them either to life imprisonment or whatever. Last time we check, all they do is to reinstate them, reintegrate them. Not just to the society, but to the militaries. That is why over eighty percent of the military of Nigeria today are terrorists. We want to send a strong message to the leader of the free world. A president that we so much respect. President Trump. Please you and Secretary of War. Pet, uh, Peti. Please kindly don't sponsor these terrorists. Please kindly don't sponsor Nigerian terrorist state. Why we use the word terrorist state? Because Nigeria sponsor terrorists. That's what make them terrorists. Please, we plead, don't let any of the United States. Military hardware land in the hand of Nigerian government. The Takona, the Takona jet that was sold to Nigeria a few years ago. They use the jet to bomb Biafran Christians. Minister of Information, I don't know if you can get this picture of where these terrorists. With the, the US weapon that, that show that that weapon belonged to the United States of America Armed Forces. But it managed to land in the hand of the Nigerian terrorists. Sometimes you ask question, how did this get to these terrorists? And just few days ago. The children, the kids that were kidnapped from the school. I think the news that we are getting is that the Nigerian terrorist state negotiate with these bandits. Or you call them terrorists and pay them. In millions of billions to secure the release of this student. That money that they pay to these terrorists, what do you think the terrorists will do with it? To get more weapons. This is a playbook. This is a playbook of the Nigerian government with the terrorists. They know what they are doing. This is part of the ways and means the federal government sponsor the terrorists. They sponsor the terrorists by this kidnapping. They play along and allow these terrorists to kidnap. Students, children, people, whatever you call it. And the same government will in turn. Go in the name of negotiating with these terrorists. And pay these terrorists a huge amount of money. We appreciate the central region of Biafran for this wonderful town hall meeting today. And we appreciate. The reps and the admin, the administration. And all the coordinators, please don't let your spirit be weakened. The Nigerian terrorist state think by holding our leader Mazi Nandikano. That will stop our freedom. We promise them, if anything happened to our leader Mazi Nandikano. If anything. They must make sure that he's alive and healthy. But for sure, what we are doing, we release him. If you are not be part of this. Freedom, please, after everything that is happening. After the way they try to humiliate with Biafran people. Trying to weaken our spirit, trying to break us down. If you are not funding this great movement, I don't know how you sleep. If you don't break your heart seeing what they do to our leader Mazi Nandikano. I don't know whether you a Biafran or not. And for some of you, I know we are so emotionally attached to him. But we just want to let you know that. The Nigerian terrorist state, what they are doing now is the last game they have. They are doing everything they are doing to see if they can weaken his spirit, they can break him down. And as well. To weaken us. To break us down. It's high time all of us we set our eyes on the prize. The harder we hit Nigerian terrorist state. Like I said in our last town hall meeting. We need the logistics. We need things that we can use to liberate our land. And if you in Biafran, you know what to do. Anything that represent Nigeria, don't let it stand, bring it down. If it is the oil that belong to us that they are extracting one way or the other way. If you can disrupt it. It's your oil, it's our property, it's your property, you own it, do it. Hold everything accountable. If it is the oil that is leaving from our land, hold that oil accountable. Tell this oil, this man, tell this gas that you going nowhere. Instead of that your oil to leave from water. Instead of that oil from our suburb, from data, from a car, from nowhere, from a energy. Instead of that oil to leave to my body, tell this oil, come back here, you going nowhere. Tell the oil, the oil belongs to. Tell the oil, the oil belongs to you. It's your right. It is your oil and gas. You own it. Whoever have problem with that, you come and tell us that they have problem with that. Then we'll find how to solve the problem. Anything that belong to your land, don't let it out. Anything that belong to a Biafran, belong to a Biafran. The oil and gas is our own. Shell gas station, N U P C, all these foreign gas, all these foreign enterprise in our land that know that what they are doing is wrong. It's high time they do what is right and come to the Biafran people and let us negotiate and talk and do business together. I'm aware what happened in nineteen sixty seven to nineteen seventy. The negotiation, what they trying to have with our leader, Ojuwu and Philip Ephim. Whatever went right or wrong that time can as well be corrected. But what belong to us, belong to us. We will be the one to give the conditions of what belong to us. But what we promise any company is that we'll do business in genuity with good faith. We'll do business that you will be happy and the Biafran people will be happy. And remember, Biafran first. It must be for the interest of Biafran people first. But whatever we have in our land, we can share it with the entire world. As long as it benefit us first. And in extension, the whole world will benefit from it. We are not selfish or greedy. We are open to business. It's better you come and do business with the Biafran people now before it is too late. Because time is coming. You might not have the opportunity or the chance to do business with Biafran people. Time is coming that we might choose to look for other company. We know we have a lot of company from United States of America and from Britain, Britain and other countries as well. It is time you all come and negotiate and work with the Biafran people. We open our arms for that discussion. But what happened in nineteen sixty seven to nineteen seventy will not repeat itself. And for the Hausa Fulani Jihadist people, if they think that what happened in nineteen sixty seven to nineteen seventy, we repeat itself and favor them, they miscalculate. The war, the genocide war from nineteen sixty seven to nineteen seventy, over ninety nine percent of the Middle Belt believe in one Nigeria and they support the North. This time around, last time I checked, over eighty percent of Middle Belt, they don't believe, they want to work with the North. Last time I checked, the Odudua Republic, the Yoruba people, they either here or not. Over fifty percent might decide not to work with the North. At the end, it will favor the Biafrans, it will favor the Middle Belt and also going to favor the Odudua Republic. It will be wise and reasonable if the Yoruba, if the Yoruba people to stop colluding with the Fulani hersmen. If they will stop colluding with Nigerian terrorist state, we understand they are broader. Tunubu is the one in charge. But they should remember that Tunubu will not be there forever. And life move on and life goes on. Please, my fellow citizens, know your enemy, tread with caution. If possible, move your business from Lagos. Remember before the war, our leaders, then Ojuwu and Philip Ephim. Encourage Biafrans to move back to the North. And for many that did not live the North, back to east, they were all killed, massacred by the same Hausa Fulani people. We encourage you, invest in Biafran land. Invest in your security in Biafran land. The land belong to you. Don't let your land be overrun by these invaders. Obi Kubana, if these invaders take over your land, Odogu Ebu, where will you go? Ee Money, if these invaders take over your land, chase your parents if they still alive, your siblings, your uncle, nephews from your land, where will you go? Are you going to go to Ambazodion? You might not be welcomed. All these celebrities in our land that are not speaking up, don't be a coward. Support your freedom so your people can be proud of you and also celebrate with you. And all these illegitimate governors that have decided to kill Biafran people, this is from what you are doing because it will not end well. When this time will be for you, you cannot escape it. Because we definitely get to you. We definitely hold you accountable, you and your entire household. Or you better move. Just like the drunkard caller Willie Obiana does not reside in United States of America. I don't know why he found America as a place of where he will be safe and comfortable with him for him after governing Anembra for how many years? He not able to put Anembra or build Anembra in a way that he will retire in Anembra. Because they never believe in the Nigerian system. We want to send a strong message to the Nigerian government. The world is watching. From Washington DC, they are paying key interest in what is happening. What just happened few days ago to our leader Mazin Nandu. The Nigerian terrorist state have just shown themselves how the judicial system, they have failed the global community. How corrupt they are, how biased they are, how evil they are. If they can jail innocent man who is fighting for his people and they refuse to go after the terrorists, rather they sponsor the terrorists. My fellow citizens, thank you from here. I believe that what is happening these few days, you can see that you are not in Nigeria. You are not part of Nigeria. They don't love you. From the Middle Belt to the South Wales, you can intermarry with them, do business with them, live with them, play soccer with them, play football with them, go to church with them. But deep down inside them, they hate you with passion. They will stab you any minute of the day. That is why in Lagos state today, they are burning your businesses that worth millions of dollars, not even in Nigeria. That is why in Lagos state today, the Biafran Christian people, their homes are being demolished by the same Nigerian government. Go to the North. That is why the Biafran Christians today in the North, your businesses have been bombed. Your home have been demolished. They don't love you. They don't like you. Don't force yourself into destruction. It's time you build home. It's time you take your investment back to Biafran. Move your companies back to Biafran. They will be forced to come from North to buy your goods from Biafran. They will be forced to come from Lagos state to buy whatever products you manufacture from Biafran. Just the same way Biafrans travel from here to China to go and import whatever that they sell. The same way Biafrans travel to Japan. That is the same way the Nigerian people will travel to Biafran to buy whatever product you have. Thank you from here. Please, what we are doing now is what we release our leader Mazin Nandu. The same way they have waged this war upon us. The same way we bring everything Nigeria done in our territory. The same way we destroy Nigeria with everything we have. Bring your money, bring your fund. If you want our leader Mazin Nandu out today, tomorrow. If you want Mazie Simon Eba to be released from Finland out today, tomorrow, let's go harder and burn this shit whole country down. They are monitoring our body movement, they are monitoring us, they are trying to see our respond. We have to respond. We must respond. In a war, when your opponent strike you, they wait and see how you respond. If you don't respond, they will keep bombarding you, striking you and striking you. Let's strike them back in a way that it will pain them. Thank you from here. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you from here. We appreciate everyone here today. Sorry that I take a little bit time longer than I anticipated. It's just that there's a lot to talk about. Biafran is here and from Washington DC. We'll do everything we can. We'll talk to US lawmakers to let them know what exactly happened, happening. It's not you know, like how the Nigerian terrorist state are trying to portray it. What is happening in Biafran land and in Middle Belt is a genocide war. It's a calculated plan. They have a map of Nigeria to Islamize the whole territory. They try to conquer us. They try to conquer the whole region of Biafran. What is happening now in Biafran is jihadism, jihad. The Muslim, Allah Koba. There is nothing like moderate Muslim, normal or not normal or extreme, they are all the same. The moderate Muslims sponsor the extremists. The ones they call the estimate Muslim, whatever they are, they are their foot soldier. These terrorists have been sponsored by Iran, by Saudi Arabia, Turkey and Syria and all these other Muslim countries. It have been what they want. So if they succeed in conquering the territory of Nigeria, which they will not conquer Biafran. Their goal is to conquer our land and lay their hand on the resources and use the resources to attack the whole entire world until they Islamize the whole world according to their their, 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 their book of Muslim that said jihadism is the holy war of God. And that jihadism is for them to conquer Biafran is part of it. And it's happening even in Europe today. So they now see what we are fighting against. Thank you very much from here, please. Our website is open twenty four seven. Kindly go and fund your freedom, support your freedom. If you want to hear result and see how fast we liberate our land, support your freedom, fund your freedom. We need to invade Nigeria from our land. Our land is our land. Hundred and ten years ago and above, we are not Nigerian, we can never be Nigerian. And what we are doing is what we release our leader Mazin Nandu. It's a game. They are just playing a mind game. They are trying to see if if our leader Mazin Nandu can negotiate a political solution, maybe they probably be dreaming of twenty twenty seven. That will not happen. We know who our leader is. What gonna happen to them, they will be forced to come to negotiate and we'll make sure we release our leader Mazin Nandu. Thank you from here. Thank you very much for this opportunity and for having me here in your midst today. I appreciate. Thank you very much.
Deuwa PM. God bless you. Your time now, you are in another day and we should be rounding up in no distance time. Thank you so much. Freedom for, your hand is up. Go ahead. Let's be concise of our time, please. Freedom for Biafran. Admit yourself.
Yeah, hello. Good evening.
Deuwa.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for all your effort. Yes, from, from, from the little that comes from my way or to my way. I, I, I want to support with Tati, Ajama.
Thank you. Thank you, Wajalaka. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We come.
Alright, yeah.
Admin, Edonge Bum, admit yourself. Over to you. Admin, Edonge Bum, admit yourself. Admin, Edonge Bum, admit yourself. Not ready.
I'm getting old. Why I'm?
Admin, Edonge Bum is not ready. Regime Fury, over to you.
Okay, am I coming out, sir?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Honorable Acting Prime Minister, Your Excellency, thank you very much for that for that wonderful speech that you just gave to us. Like we have always said, your word encourages, energizes us and it keeps us going. Thank you so much, sir. I really appreciate. And the happiest father or the happiest ponder on earth is the one that has prepared his or her children to a point that even when he or she is not around, he is very confident, he is very confident that the children will carry out his or her legacy. That is the proudest father, that is the happiest father. So I must tell you that our leader Mazin Nandu was very proud of us. Our Prime Minister Simon Epa was very proud of us because by the way, yeah, this is exactly what they were doing. What they were doing was to reform, fight for the freedom of their people, defend their people, defend the biggest women and children, the Christians, the civilians. This was all they were doing. Today they are not available. The children they have raised continue in that legacy. So they are the happiest. I've done one time in the world before. And I'm going to take the colonel with another one time on era on behalf of Isoku and Ourobo State. And I am going to also support the speech of our beloved Acting Prime Minister with one thousand AJ. So the total for today is going to be three thousand AJ. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Are you the mic here?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Regime. Thank you. Biafran people, this is time, this is time that we need to buckle up our seat belts, know what we are be praying for since.
For Washington to start to discuss our course is happening. Everyone have those that have themselves. So we also need to help ourselves. We're not gonna leave everything to United States of America or Canada or any other country that wanna. Come to our rescue, so we'll be fighting, doing what we're supposed to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, APN, we come to our honorable rep, Honorable Milik, over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Information, I appreciate you. And. My APN, His Excellency, Honorable Odeka is special. To me particularly. You know, it's not flattering him, he has taken this role by this law. And, and we are supposed to. This meeting is being recorded. Get out there for us to, we already know what's going on, but those of us who are pretending as if. We are chasing shadows. He has already proven them very well. And for that speech, the real force, the fact that we are right on course. I will support him with a hundred Ajema, bringing in two hundred Ajema for the seat. There was a.
There were, thank you, sir. God bless you.
There were, thank you very much.
There were. There was the American. Yeah, thank you so much, the floor is still open. As we prepare to run up because of. The time of our dear citizens from the homeland. Who have been here for the past. Five hours now. So if you have something to support, please do so. And in absence of that, we should be. Preparing to run up because. This is almost one AM. Of Biafran time. Edongebo admin, over to you.
Shalom, Biafran.
Welcome.
Thank you, my minister. I'm an APN. Edongebo, I welcome you for your. Your resilience toward this very course of freedom. So Edongebo have supported this very town hall meeting of the Central Biafran. In the sum of fifteen thousand AJ. Thank you very much, Minister of Information and Communication, thank you. I admire.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to everyone, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So. We need to run up, please, because time is not on our side, we need to run up. Who should be taking the closing prayer, should get ready, please. Good number, over to you, your hand is up.
Yes, Honorable APN, thank you so much. I'm August Herbos, please, I want to, my fellow Biafrans. Please, next fundraising, let us. I am challenging everyone of us with a five-five new members in this fundraising. Yes, I'm good number challenging you, if you fail, I will find you with ten thousand Ajema. Thank you so much, APN. All of course must come with new five-five.
There were, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, my general, thank you. Thank you. Um. The person that is supposed to take the closing prayers. Chuku Kadibia, Ossissioma, are you there? Chuku Kadibia, Ossissioma. Are you there?
Good evening, Biafran.
There were, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Our honorable APN. Good evening from my side. Um. Let me start by appreciating our almighty God. For a day like this. For making it a reality for us. We are alive to see a day like this and thank God for. What he has done today in this central region town hall meeting. I thank everyone of course who has participated. In this, in the success of this town hall meeting in one way or the other. Especially. For those. That, that have given. What they have given in support of this town hall meeting. Um. You know. One thing I understand is that. The terrorist state of Nigeria, if they see any way they can stop this, our gathering. Our this fundraising. If they see a way to stop it final, final, so that we will not be generating any Ajema or AJ, they will do that. Because even the little we are doing, it causing more problem to them. But that is beyond their power because. A God has made it to be so. I thank everyone. Who, who is always giving. Let me speak this in Igbo, please pardon me. Ah, Anna Makeke Ne, Onyabona. Ndenkeji Ajema, Mandenkeji AJ, Wenapia Obodo, Epun Subo Nigeria, Otare. Ah, Adema. It is good that we always gather and do what we know how to do best. If you look at Nigeria as a whole. You will understand that the safest place now. Or the, or somewhere that is more guaranteed to stay is Biafran. Reason, because of Biafran government, because of our Biafran Defense Forces. They have made it to be so. With this little money, we always contribute, it is going a long way. So I encourage everyone of us to continue to do what we know how to do best. For those that are contributing, we all know how our pockets are. Most of us, we have little, some also have more, so let's keep, keep it on. Let us never get tired because the fight for freedom is always difficult. But the, but by the help of Elohim, well. We will, we will become victorious in this fight for freedom. I thank our ever APN for his speech. He has done a lot, he has done well, APN, I salute you, sir. It is not easy to carry this cross, it is a heavy cross. But God will continue to strengthen you, God will continue to guide and protect you. God will continue to see you through in your going out and your coming in. I pray that God will also continue to see us all through. In everything that we are doing, in our going out, in our coming in, in the, in our various works of hands. God will continue to provide for us, he will continue to enrich our pockets. So that we will continue to give more. For the success of our Biafra and our freedom. I thank everyone who have participated and I am also begging. Those who are still watching, those who are still hoping that, oh, this thing that is happening in Nigeria. It is far away from me, it is far away from us, it will not reach our side. It is almost there, please, let us do what we have to do. As early as possible, so that we will not also be. Ah, will not also be affected by this evil invasion of these terrorists. I pray that God Almighty will continue to guide our. Our Supreme Leader Mazinamdekan. Even, even in the detention where he is, God will continue to. Protect him, no evil shall before him. I commit our able Prime Minister into his hand that Elohim will continue to intervene on his behalf. My prayer tonight is that this list for Biafra will never be in vain. God Almighty will continue to strengthen us, we will never lose courage. We will continue to fight until we will, we have our freedom. Because that is our desire, that is what we fight for. Our parents has fought for it. Up to this day, we are still fighting. But I believe that God, who is in heaven, will never allow us to be destroyed as a people. I thank you all for participating in this town hall meeting. I will not forget to appreciate. Our Central Region Chairman and all the state admins. For participating in this town hall meeting. I thank you all for what he has done. I pray that God will continue to see us through in everything. Thank you.
There were. There were. Information Minister, are you there?
Thank you very much, greetings to everyone from Michigan is fifty. Mama nu.
Mama wa la ma de.
Thank you, thank you very much from Michigan, I asked Mazzy, I asked a few yesterday.
Yeah, I was here yesterday.
Okay, you know Michigan made us proud few days ago, right?
Yeah, here.
Ah, no, no, Congressman James, you know, he's from Michigan.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, he made us proud, sir, and. I believe, you know, Biafran in Michigan, also we made him, you know, make him proud. Biafran Christians in Michigan.
Yeah, we are working on that.
Yes, it's one of us. Yeah, it's one of us, it's one of those voice. That speak for the oppressed people like Biafran Christians. You know, oppressed people all around the world, so just like Ted Cruz, we don't play with people like that.
Appreciate.
Thank you very much, ndewo.
There was.
Okay, Mazzy Sunny, I think, let me just say, great, thank you, Central Region, thank you, all the honorable, I can see. See the face of our US rep, Eminem is smiling. So for those that don't believe Biafra is here, and that's your own business, but we know it's here. So everything they are doing is just to break and weaken our spirit, that will not work. So if it is not for Biafra, our leader Mazinamdekan, you know, gonna be where he is today. So. He is where he is today because of our freedom and everything they are doing is to stop our freedom. That will not work. So we are definitely free. And we know why we are fighting for our freedom. One is we wanna be free and our children, our generation, our family, our land. So everything is in play. Because if we are not free, one, this Islamic jihadis. They will Islamize us, they will terrorize us, they will invade us, they will, actually they are, they are fight, they are invading on us, we are fighting, pushing them back. They will take over our land, chase us out of our land, land grabbing as well, so you know, they are, these people are wonders. They try to grab our land and make it their own, I don't think that will work, so I don't see any reasonable human being. That we allow a stranger to come into their home or their house and occupy and chase them out of the house. Then if they chase you out of the house. When it rain, when you see the storm and it's about to rain. Where will you go? Where will you depend on, where what will be your shelter there? Then that means all the rain will fall on your head. And that will put you in a, in what? You know, you'll be cold or probably get sick on the, whether you die because. You need a place you call home, you need a place where you, you know, where you have your shelter. And where you have your shelter, not just for you, your family member, Biafran's that life, so our home must be protected. So we must make sure that we don't allow this land grabbers. This invasion, this people that have come to invade our land. Then when they go to UN or US, they start lying to them is because of climate change. Climate what? Biafran territory, actually, when you go to the north, their land size or land mass is way more than Biafran. So all that who wish territory, they want to tell us that it's not enough for them. So please, let's all, all fight for our freedom, fund our freedom. It's time to kick these terrorists out of our land. So we don't want anything that we kill, you know, break us down, that will never work. Now or never. Our leader must be free, thank you from here. Thank you, thanks, thanks, thanks everybody, thank you.